Okay, so I'd like to call this meeting of the Committee of the Whole for March 26th to order. Would the Clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Barnes?
Here.
Mr. Bowersox?
Here.
Ms. Schenelweth?
Present.
Mr. Lewis?
Here.
Mr. Roberts?
Here.
Mr. Smythe?
Present.
Ms. Stevenson?
Mayor Pressing?
Here.
So we have a full house today. Are there additions to the agenda? If not, is there a staff report from our staff?
No, I don't think so.
Okay, I know the Mayor had a comment. Go ahead.
Yes, I'd like to introduce Ron O'Neil, who's our new Assistant City Attorney. This is his first day.
Welcome.
Great. And no other reports from staff, you said, Bruce? Okay. So I would take a motion for the approval of the minutes of the previous meeting?
So, um, a second that?
We have a motion from Lynn and a second from Robert. And is there any corrections to the minutes? Okay, if not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 All those opposed? That carries. We have public input. There's, I have three people who'd like to speak today. First, we'll, oh, actually, a couple of people want to speak at the time of, let me see, someone's sidewalk, okay, Audrey Ishi. If you could just come forward and state your address, please.
I'm Audrey Ishi. And I was, I actually came to talk about the snow shoveling topic. I know that there's a lot of pressure to make some kind of requirement for snow shoveling as a result of our snow. And I'd just like to mention, a lot of the assumption is that if, if the sidewalks were all shoveled, they'd be perfectly walkable and safe. And that's a wonderful idea. Unfortunately, it's really not true. After the snow fell in February, I spent, for the next three weeks, it was on February 13th, I walked to and from work each day, which is 20 minutes each way, and I rarely was able to walk on the sidewalks. And whether they were shoveled or not shoveled, unfortunately, it made little difference. The shoveled ones would tend to melt and have slick spots virtually every day that made it impossible to walk on them. So I was forced to walk in the street, which was not unpleasant, because drivers just naturally had slowed down. I didn't see anyone speaking on cellphones. It was actually, the streets were relatively melted and clear. Lots more friction on the street than was available on the sidewalks. Now, towards the end of the period, by March 5th, there were some places where if there was no shoveling and there was heavy traffic, boy, that was tough, because that just became slick. It had melted too. People had tramped on it. And that would be in front of businesses or on major thoroughfares, like Illinois Street. I know that Lincoln Avenue was impossible to, to get to the bus stop right immediately following the snowstorm. And any of the thoroughfares that have bus stops, I really feel for anybody who had to get to a bus stop. But I think private home, requiring private homeowners to shovel, most do. I think most definitely do if they can, and I think we all like to see them shoveled. But it's difficult for some people to do it, and frankly, I think if we made it a law, we'd see more heart attacks out there. And I don't think that that's the intent of any law, to actually strike down some, some people, you know, who are, who may have health situations and would be, would be doing it if they could do it, and don't need a law to tell them that. I think it's good for the city to encourage private homeowners to shovel when they can. And I think it'd be wonderful if the high schools and middle schools developed a service project to get the kids who are out of school on those days out shoveling walks for people who need it. That would be a wonderful service project. Of course, we don't know how often it'd ever be actually called into action in Champaign, Urbana, but it would be something that they could have there and take pride in anyway. So, in summary, I think it'd be wonderful if, if the city were able to find a way to pay for the main thoroughfares to be shoveled, where there's a great deal of tramping that does change what's called a natural accumulation of snow to an unnatural one, in front of, which would be multi-unit, multi-unit housing and in front of businesses, and maybe at the bus stops, that type of thing. But on the side residential streets, I think it'd be far better to recognize that pedestrians have a right to the, to the street as well, when conditions require it, that the homeowners have paid to have those streets cleared and have a right to walk in them. And in recognition of that, perhaps, although I didn't observe that it was necessary, perhaps it would be necessary to pass an emergency speed limit of 10 miles an hour when there's pedestrians in the streets and no cellphone usage during those periods. Again, most people, it seemed like they were complying with that anyway. You know, I don't know whether it really has to be made in ordinance. And then, do I have time still? The other topic is, is a race, the proposal to increase the speed limit on Race Street there, which is south of Windsor by Meadow Brook. There's Clark, first of all, I note on the corner, there's Clark Lindsey, which is the senior citizen housing. And there across the street from it, on the, on your left there, you're looking, I believe, towards, towards Windsor on Race. No, sorry, we're looking south at the bridge. Okay, so, so Clark Lindsey's on your left, and on the right is U of I, real attractive U of I forest paths, that people walk across from, from Meadow Brook Park, either from gardening, from walking there, running on those paths. They walk across that street to, to run on those trails. And naturally, being at Clark Lindsey, some of the people who walking aren't going to be walking real fast either. There's a lot of driveways, there's a lot of traffic in and out. It's just not a good place to have the speed limit increased to 40 miles per hour. It's also an extremely narrow street, much narrower than Race is north of Windsor, and much narrower than even the bridges, which is where the city of Urbana limits are, I believe, is down at the bridge before, just, just, is that bridge after Yankee Ridge entrance? Or before?
No.
Before, yeah. Just before the Yankee Ridge entrance. So, although, it's also a ma- major thoroughfare in and out of town for bicyclists. And the, the road is only, Charlie measured it the other day, it's only 22 feet wide, which doesn't really give you clearance for, for someone to pass a bicycle leaving three feet while staying anywhere, you know, within what might resemble their lane. So I really would be opposed to raising the traffic. I think people naturally are thinking that, well, I understand from the engineering study that in fact people are speeding, but to change the posted rate from 30 to 40 is only inviting people to then start going at 45. And that would be really catastrophic. I mean, we just don't need to see the kind of incidents that would be happening out there. That, that's, that isn't a major amenity for Urbana, because it's a quick way to get out of town, and it's very attractive. Thank you.
Any questions for Ms. Ishi? Okay, thank you. Next, we'll hear from Daryl Fausti of 409 West Main Street on the clearing snow from sidewalks and also on recycling. Daryl?
Hi, thank you for allowing me to speak. I had an opportunity to get a lawn tractor that had a snow blade with it. And I thought, well, I got a chance to do this. So the first snows came by, and I was cleaning the sidewalk, and the sidewalks are not all smooth and level. As I was going along, I hit where the one sidewalk was uneven with the others, wound up bending the frame that held the snow blade onto the garden tractor. So I went back and spent some time and straightened it out, and took off again, and I was clearing snow, and the second time, bent it some more. So it is the fourth time, I was cleaning out, cleaning the snow in front of my, my yard as well as coming around. And along Springfield Avenue, along Strawberry Fields, down to Phillips Recreation Center, the area between the sidewalk and the street is maybe 18 inches. And of course, when the snow plows come in, they just covers the walk, everything, even it goes into the yards, maybe at least two or three feet. And I was able to clean that one time, but there again, I hit another spot where the sidewalk was, wasn't smooth all the way across. So it's an, it's a, I don't, I don't know what the situation is, if we're gonna, if my only option is to shovel. And with that last snow with 14 inches, the snow plow that I had couldn't take that. So it's just pointing out the, the possibility of something other. I, it was nice to see that the park district had a really nice apparatus with a, with a brush, a cylindrical brush. That's, that cleaned off the snow fine, and it also didn't have a problem with, with a difference in elevations in the sidewalk. But that's an expensive outfit. So my only solution is that, if that's what the city, citizens want, since the sidewalk is, is city property, that the city should take care of it, and the citizens would just have to fund it. If that's, if that's what's important to the citizens of Urbana, to have the sidewalks cleaned, cleaned out, we have these regular sidewalks with, it's difficult sometimes just shovel, and we hit it with a shovel, but with something else, it's just a difficult situation. And I can't say it's the city's fault that the sidewalks are uneven, because there's tree roots growing up, there's heaving from the soils, it's just the way sidewalks are. So what can we do? I mean, other than have the city do it with maybe some sort of brushes and, and the citizens, not just the property owners, but all the citizens who use it, I mean, it's going to have to be something we all share the cost in. I mean, I can't see that the city has enough manpower to do it. Maybe as the previous speaker said, if there's some sort of volunteer groups that want to work in there, that we can get in there and do that. So that's my feeling on that. And also, as we, I walk our dogs around, I have occasion to visit dumpsters, and I'm becoming more and more alarmed at all the recycling that's in the dumpsters. I have a rental house, I have to pay a recycling tax for people to use the recycle, but they're not doing it. I see boxes that computers have come in, huge boxes, just tossed in a dumpster. The dumpster is full, nothing else can go in it. I have taken the time to break down some boxes and put them in the recyc- the recycle bin is right here. Here's the dumpster. It goes in there. I look in there, there's aluminum cans, bottles, cardboard boxes. Wait a minute, have we forgotten about recycling? I have one, a guy runs for me, he's throwing aluminum cans in the garbage. I said, what, we need to recycle? He said, what do you mean recycle? What's that? So I called the Urbana Recycle Place and had him send you some information. He still doesn't recycle. He still, I, I, I don't know, it's just annoying, and it's distressing that people are seemingly refusing to recycle. Maybe we need to have another little program that says, hey, we want to recycle. We've just been noted a green community, well, let's do something. I think we're number 10 on the list as far as a green community. But we're, we're falling down as, as citizens, recycling. And it's just distressing to me on several points, since we're paying for it two ways. We're going into the, to the dump, and we're not recycling, and we're using the, the cans, the boxes, and the paper, and whatever else. So, thank you for allowing me to speak.
Any questions? Brandon, questions for Brandon?
Yeah, thanks, Daryl. I just had a follow-up question about the recycling issue. Do you think that, I don't know, have you given any thought to the concept of as a landlord doing some requirement for your tenants or some additional information to them and say like, look, you know, you're my tenant, this is my property, and the rules of the property are, the recycling goes here and the trash goes here? Are there any programs you've thought of or considered putting in place?
I've, I've told them personally, the ones that don't recycle, I have told them, and then when he didn't, still didn't do it, I, I requested the city to send him information from UCycle. That was done, and they still don't do it. So the recycle bins have been there since they originally, these tubs, since they originally set out. But yeah, I mean, you can lead a horse to water. The thing of it is, they're not paying for it, so they don't care. That, that's, that's what I see, is, is why should I take the seconds or minutes to break down this cardboard box I just got my new computer in, when I can just put the whole thing in a dumpster? The dumpster's empty. And, and right here is the recycle bin, the, the rollaway tote. I don't know, it's a good question. I mean, I've asked them, I've given the name, I've, I've seen names on boxes in dumpsters. So I called up the UCycle, the woman who takes care of UCycle. She said, could you send something to this guy? Because I, he's off in an apartment someplace, I don't know where, and it's at my place to say, hey, Joe, you should be recycling and not tossing your car, your cardboard box in the dumpster. How is he going to respond to me?
Okay, so a follow-up question is, I know some, a policy some other cities have is actually requiring that people don't throw recyclable material in the trash, and being able to give people a ticket. If they have a trash can full of aluminum cans and cardboard, some cities do give tickets and say, that's, that's recyclable material, and it has to go in the recycle. Is that a step?
Well, that might be a possibility. It's, it's, after talking to these people and seeing them, unless they have some sort of funding on their own, I don't think they're going to do it. I mean, for a while, when we started the UCycle and had all the tubs, people were, yay, let's recycle. But a lot of those people, they're not, they've gone, moved to other places. Now they've come here, maybe where they don't have recycling programs. But it's just, I, the one particular house, they, they, here's their, their, garbage totes are full, there's stuff on the ground. Here's the recycle tote, it's never used. It sits back out of the way. It's never been used. I asked the tenants, I said, you need to start recycling. Yeah, I should do that. I'm going to start doing that one of these days. I mean, they're not my tenants, but how, how, how much can I lean on, on the neighbors?
Okay.
And, and maybe a fine or a threat of a fine, maybe that will be considered. But there's a lot of cardboard boxes, aluminum cans, bottles, going to the dump that certainly shouldn't need to be going.
Okay, thank you very much.
Did you have a question, Laurel?
I, I just had a comment. I'm, I tried walking on Springfield Avenue. I could get past Strawberry Fields, but after that, it was really impossible. And I didn't want to walk in the street, because that's a pretty busy street. So I hope that, I don't want to have plows that get their blades all bent, but I like the idea that maybe there's another technology that might work better.
Yeah, well, I got it cleaned on the first two snows, but I, then the, I just, you know, because I walked by there, and my daughter lives along there, and I just, I just kind of liked, it was my fantasy to keep my little block cleaned off. And I did for a little while, but then I just, when my snow blade got, the apparatus got bent, and it's, I had to two times just take it off, because it was dragging, and I had to come back and pick it up with my truck later on. So if there's something that we could, I don't know, maybe I just need to mark where the, all the uneven sidewalks are, do something. But yeah, that's, that's not a pleasant place, and a lot of people walk along, they're walking up to Strawberry Fields, or walking from the Phillips Recreation Center to downtown.
Thanks for your input. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Next, we have ordinance number 2007-03-032, an ordinance amending Schedule Q of Section 2364 of the Urbana Local Traffic Code. This refers to decreasing state speed limits in certain zones, in this case, Race Street. And we'll hear from Bill Gray from Public Works on this.
Thanks. Just a little background, Public Works several months ago received an inquiry from police that, what's the speed limit on South Race Street, a sign was missing, and we checked our records and looked into it and realized that it was 30 miles per hour. And pretty much, the speed limit was set years ago, like back in 79 by ordinance, largely because we had a narrow bridge on, over the McCullough Creek. It would allow one car at a time, so it was somewhat of a, a safety issue. Public Works a couple of years ago did widen the McCullough Creek Bridge, and it's now a full length, two length width across there. And we performed an engineering speed study, and the speed that cars are comfortably driving up and down that particular roadway is a recommendation by engineering of 40 miles per hour. Engineering speed studies is, is a scientific method that's used, it takes into a variety of criteria. This is something that's established statewide, and pretty much every state has similar components to it, which the main component is, is trying to find out the 85th percentile of what vehicles will travel down a street when those speeds are in fact posted. The township, Urbana Township, and the county did recently change their speeds based on a speed study, south of the corporate limits, to 40 miles per hour. We have taken into consideration the criteria of narrow streets, speeds, accidents, pedestrians, bicycle, traffic, et cetera. The recommendation to the Traffic Commission was 40 miles per hour. Certainly council prerogative to do as a wish in this case via ordinance. If they leave the speed as is, is what might have been suggested, and there's no action that's necessary. If there is a recommendation to change the speed, it would take an ordinance by city council to do so. That's all I have.
Questions? We'll hear from Brandon, the Mayor, Heather, and, okay, in that order. Brandon?
Was the speed study that was done separate for different locations, did they do a separate study maybe near the nursing home community and near the park compared to out in the country south of the corporate limit, and measure the 85th percentiles at a number of points, or just one place along this whole stretch?
There were two distinct studies, north and south of McCullough Creek.
Okay, so that speeding rate, that, you know, 93% of people were violating the 30 mile an hour limit, that's true even in this section here?
Correct.
By, okay.
Right.
And have we ever done, to your knowledge, in the last five years, speed trailers, or step enforcement, or any of, any of the tools to educate people about what the limit was and try to bring the enforcement rate into compliance? Do you know of any speed trailer or step?
I would have to defer to Chief Feely on that. I, I can't answer that.
Okay. Chief?
Did you hear?
Yeah, if, yeah, he's here, and, okay, that'd be great.
And it was also just a couple of, it sounds like the, the speed limit posting was missing, correct?
Yes, the signs.
And do you have a sense of how long it had been that way?
No, I don't think for a real long time. We first discovered this when we were concerned about the speeds on Windsor last summer with the park being there and all the discussion we had. Through miscommunication, we did end up with the step and the speed trailer on Race Street, when the intention was to have it on Windsor next to the park, that was the focus, that's what drew our attention to the missing sign. So I don't think it has been too long. We have not done much education. As soon as we discovered the mistake, we moved it back to Windsor where the intention was. So we have not done a lot of activity there.
Okay.
Thanks.
Did you have additional questions?
Nope, thank you.
Mayor?
I have a question about where was the actual measurement made north of the bridge?
Well, generally, it's midway between Windsor and, and the bridge, if that's what you're saying.
So it'd be sort of where the parking lot is?
More or less, yes.
Okay. Well, I was just wondering if people coming, coming south, they're going to come from a complete stop at Windsor, and they get up to 40 miles an hour?
I, I can assure you that the location of the study was where the speed would be at a, a consistent speed, not an acceleration-deceleration situation. It's not how you do this.
Okay, but were they, which way were the cars going when you did the, were they?
Both directions.
Both directions?
Yes.
Okay. All right, thanks.
Heather?
Well, I'm going to kind of tattle on myself. I grew up in Yankee Ridge subdivision, so 15 years ago, I got my driver's license, and I've traveled on that road lots of times, and I'm sure more than 30 miles an hour. I believe I actually probably got a ticket one time on that road. So I would say that the studies that are written right here for us are pretty accurate. I know that most of the people who live out in Yankee Ridge have lived out there for a long time, and so they know the speed limit, and obviously don't go by it. So I would say that, based on this study and what I know from my past 15 years ago, that it's probably wise of us to take the recommendation of this, of the Traffic Commission. I also have a question here. It says that we're, the Urbana Local Traffic Code decreasing state speed limits in certain zones.
Right. Reason for that is, this is considered a non-urban area, and non-urban areas, state law vehicle code is 55 miles per hour. So we're decre- I mean, that's why it's decreasing. Okay, so this is a, what we consider a non-urban area.
Lynn, and then Dennis?
Now, one of the concerns I've heard is that, you know, if you raise it, then people will just go faster. That does seem kind of logical to me, just knowing human nature. And so doesn't that, that seems maybe that it makes the area more unsafe, just because the road is narrow, and you do have bikers on there, you have people walking, and just tell me what you think about that.
Well, for the most part, we, when the speed limit was changed, it's reflective of what people are comfortable driving down that road, okay? And when the speed is 40 miles per hour, there may be some going faster than that, 45, what have you, but currently, people are going that fast because they're comfortable traveling at speed, speed limit. The problem we currently have is, is that we have a very high violation rate, which intuitively tells us really the speed is, is set too low. But if we keep it at 30, I think you're going to continue to see that situation. But to answer your question directly, no, I think people are going to go, and it is a narrow road, okay, so it's not like you're going to see 55 and 60 miles per hour, like on a Windsor Road, where you have 12-foot wide lanes. It's a very wide, clear type situation. Here, you do have some confining factors that I think you could keep the speeds a little bit lower. There's shrubbery and such, road narrowness, those things generally do keep the speeds a little bit lower.
Dennis?
Well, of course, I serve on the Traffic Commission, and we have actually talked about this road a couple of times, not just once. The road is narrow, and there are, there is elder housing, the, the complex for the elder people. Mark, Clark Lindsey is on the corner. We have a public park a little farther south than that, in which there are community gardens, and people come in to, do circular walks in the park. And across the street, we do have a forested area, which comes close to the road and does, I think, because it's near the road and it's a low visibility side of the road, one would think would probably make people be more cautious, especially because there's possible wildlife, you know, in the evening hours coming across the road. Originally, in the discussion of the Traffic Commission, Mr. Smythe was there, and he had come for a different reason actually, concerning stop signs in his neighborhood. But he voiced the opinion that it was a heavily used egress from the city for bicyclists looking to make longer travels outside of town, going south. We had a discussion, and at that time, we suggested a compromise, that the speed limit posted between Windsor Road and the bridge, where the missing sign was, would be 35 miles an hour. It's a compromise between the 30 miles an hour that's north of Windsor Road and the 40 miles an hour that you hit as you pass the, the city limits and head into the township. And the Commission actually recommended that, that speed limit to forward to council. And then we had a, the, the topic came back up onto our agenda the second time the next, next month following. And, and Bill Gray did explain to us about the difference between, I guess, what you might call subjective scheduling of speed limits versus scheduling speed limits based on criteria of data accumulated. And of course, we have here the results of a speed test and the range of actual travel times on this road. And I think that, that the upshot of the discussion was that the appropriate thing to do is to follow the data, and that it's not recommended to follow what you would consider intuitive postings of speed limit. Now, I understand that data does give us information about actual travel of the speeds on the road, but I feel like there has to be some kind of intuitive interpretation of that data. And given the conditions and the use of that road, is it necessary to make the 40 mile per hour speed limit initiate right on Windsor Road? I think that the transitionary 35 miles per hour was actually kind of an interesting compromise, and perhaps it's really like doing nothing, because five, five miles an hour up or down, does that really affect the, the perception of people who are traveling on the road? And we already have a significant number of people who are going 38 miles an hour, according to this data. There are 15 cars that were going 38 miles an hour, and that's the greatest number of cars clocked on their road. The second largest number of clocked cars, 13 cars, was going 35 miles an hour. And then there's a range of other speeds going from 39 to 44 miles per hour on their road. So is 40 miles an hour a good compromise, given the data? Or should we, we, I think 30 is too, too short. So I'm suggesting that we might consider 35 miles per hour, and it would be a subjective decision rather than a one based on, purely on data.
I have a follow-up question real quick, which is, when the speed study was conducted, was was the signage posted clearly what the speed limit was? It was before this, the sign hasn't been replaced, right?
Correct.
Okay. Heather, did you have a question?
Well, I, I do know that, I hear talk about the park and then the walking path. There, when I was growing up, there was never that wide walking path in front of Clark Lindsey that goes north and south on, on Race Street. And when, you know, I mean, it wasn't there and there were people that would walk, you know, there, walk up and down that area anyway, even though there wasn't a very wide walking path. And I also was driving there before the bridge was expanded. And so I've seen it go from, you know, you could have two inches between two cars if they were trying to pass each other to being able to pass each other comfortably and not a problem at all. So like I said before and I'll state again, I, I've grown up in this area. I don't think that posting a thirty-five mile an hour speed limit is going to change what people do. I think that it, if you say, if it shows forty, most people are going to abide by it because that's pretty much the average of what people are doing when there's not a sign there to begin with. So I don't see that it's going to increase a hazard, you know, cause it to be more hazardous if we increase it to forty because there was, that's what people were going when there wasn't a sign posted. So that's how I would, how I would vote as far as what's come to us from, from Bill Gray and Public Works.
Charlie?
I have three questions. Is the, the road wider south of the bridge or is it just around the bridge that it seems wider?
It's a little wider right by the bridge.
Right by the bridge?
Yeah.
Okay, but it's back to twenty-two feet south of the bridge?
South, yes.
Okay. And so the bridge is what, twenty-eight feet wide or?
I'd have to check to confirm that.
Okay, but something like that, twenty-eight, thirty-one, somewhere in there?
I'd have to confirm that.
Yeah, okay. Okay. And, you know, it sort of concerns me now that the speed limit signs weren't up when the study was done. I think that's a very significant piece of information. The other thing I think is real important to know is what month was the study done in? Was it done over the winter or was it done in the middle of summer?
I think it takes, um...
October 2nd.
October 2nd, so it's sort of...
Conditions were sunny, dry, and eighty-three degrees.
Okay, so, and it's done through the whole day or?
I can tell you that. From 1:20 PM to 2:50 PM, that's one and a half hours. A hundred and fifty cars were counted.
Okay, and is that, was that a weekday or a weekend?
I can't tell you that.
What was it, October what?
2nd.
Okay, I'll look it up in a second. And then, one of the things that concerns me here is the difference in rural versus, you know, the urban versus rural definition here. You know, here we've got a park with a lot of people at some parts of the, of the year. Yesterday was very busy out there. There were just, you know, many bicyclists, many pedestrians, joggers. I mean, the park was in full use. It was like the first day that I've seen it in full use. And even then, it was still not, the parking lot wasn't full like I've seen it on, on other Saturdays and Sunday afternoons. So another concern I have is, of course, the, the day of the week the study is done. So what we've got is, we've got a, we've got a, the most popular park in, in probably the Champaign-Urbana area, maybe the county. It's the most popular park in the county, basically. And people come from all over to, to go to. We've got, I know there are a number of people that, that garden in there from Champaign in, in the organic plots that are there. And as, as Ms. Ishi said earlier, it's a very popular route for bicyclists. It's the major route south out of town to a lot of connecting routes for bicyclists. And while I was out there yesterday, every ten, fifteen minutes, there were a group of bicyclists going by in the couple hours that I was out gardening. Every time I looked up, there was a bicyclist going by. In fact, when I went to take the pictures earlier, that I showed earlier, I didn't even have to stage a bicyclist. I had one just show up there as I was coming down the road and was able to just stop the car and take a quick picture through the window. And I didn't, didn't go to the extent of staging some of what, what it would be like to have a bicycle on the road as, as, you know, there was one bicycle there. But, you know, to go around that bicyclist and give them three feet of clearance, the person would be in the other lane. And so my concern is, is that on these busy days, weekends in particular, when we do have a lot of bicyclists, a lot of joggers, cars moving along there at forty miles an hour, which is probably generous, you know, if we set it to forty, it's, there are people that, a lot of people are going to be doing forty-five. I, I think it's just asking for disaster. You know, we've already seen, we've already had somebody get killed by a cellphone-using driver. I, I just think it adds to it. You have a very rough surface, you have bicycles trying to avoid those potholes in the road. It's not easy to, to, you know, be a bicyclist on that road and have to concentrate on, on dodging the potholes and having to watch for cars coming both ways. And that ten miles an hour increase from thirty to forty is a significant increase in stopping speed and reaction time. And as, as you may recall, Cynthia Hoyle has talked about the exponential increase in, in the, in the impact of, of getting hit. And, you know, pedestrians tend to survive when it's under thirty-five miles an hour and they tend not to survive when it's more than thirty-five miles an hour. And of course, it's, you know, for every, every mile per hour is, I forget what the, every mile per hour is, is it six feet per second or something like that? I believe it's eighty-eight feet per second at sixty miles an hour, so divide that up and you can get the per mile. So, you know, every mile per hour is, adds, adds a lot to, to the, the reaction time and the time that elapses. So I would, or just, just to stay at thirty miles an hour, I don't hear a hue and cry to raise the speed limit to thirty-five or forty. And though I recognize thirty-five might be a nice compromise, but as I thought about this and, and saw things yesterday when they weren't quite in full use, I would prefer just to leave this alone and just let this thing die in committee.
Brandon?
Yeah, excuse me, yes. Given the fact that we know the youngest and the oldest of us people are the people who are least able to judge distances, given the fact that Clark Lindsey and the park and the cyclists are all here, and the fact that this test weren't done with signs actually up that said it was thirty, I know I drive this stretch between Yankee Ridge and Urbana and I don't know what the speed limit is and so I just go what feels safe, but not knowing what the limit is, people make it up for themselves. I would like to make a motion that we keep this in committee, that we don't forward this to council yet, and that we ask staff to post what the current limit is and to place a speed trailer there sometime this summer and to revisit this at the end of summer with us. And at the end of summer, after people have had a chance to see the limit and learn about it, then I think the data and the understanding of it, you know, makes more sense to evaluate. Then people have had a fair chance to obey the rules once they know what the rules are. And at that point, it would be fair of us to evaluate. I certainly understand staff's approach. We don't want to set a limit that's unreasonable. You can't say fifteen miles an hour and just expect that people will go fifteen if the road is built like an interstate highway that's, you know, designed for people to go sixty-five. So I understand that you can't set enforceable limits or else people start breaking them and then people start feeling like they can break the limits everywhere and that hurts public safety too. But I think we can't just change the speed limit to match what people are doing now without giving people a chance to be educated about what the limit there is. So my motion again would be that we don't forward this to council, that we keep it in committee for now, that we ask staff to post the current thirty mile an hour limit and to put a speed trailer there to help educate people and revisit it at the end of the summer.
Second. We have a motion from Brandon and then a second from Lynn. Is there discussion?
Voice of reason?
I have a comment, which is, there's, there's, there's two things that, that seem strange. The first is that the sign was missing when the speed study happened. I'm somebody who really follows the speed limit and constantly looking at what the speed limit is. So I can identify with folks maybe going over the speed limit if they're not, if they don't know about that. Bill?
Just a point of clarification, technically, and I'd have to confirm this, you remove or cover up the speed limit signs when you do the study? So...
Oh, every time you do a study anywhere, the point is to look at...
I just wanted to let you know, that should not have been...
Okay, that's helpful, I appreciate that, appreciate that information. So with any study, whether there's a sign or not, that's not part of the equation is a, is a sign. Okay, well, that's helpful. The second issue is, is if folks, I understand a study where folks look at, engineers look at how fast people go in a given space and see what people are comfortable with. I think that there's two things that could come out of such a study. The first is what you proposed, which is going to forty miles per hour. The second is to say people are going too fast in, on a narrow street with children, pedestrians, bicyclists, seniors, and potential crossing of the streets, and therefore, we should be looking at traffic calming measures. So part of what I would like to, to encourage staff to do as we look at this area is actually to look at potential traffic calming measures. There is a problem. The problem is that people are going forty, thirty-nine to forty-five miles per hour in this area, but the solution isn't necessarily to increase the traffic speeds. It could also be that if there are people crossing the street into the university plot as Ms. Ishi was talking about, perhaps having some kind of bump outs that, you know, or some way of, of forming two areas where drivers can see that there's, you know, that there's kind of a place where people stand to wait to get across the street and then a place where they come. And so they see that. And second comment is, I bike a lot, I bike a lot on this route. It's my main way of getting out of town. Well, it's either Washington Street or it's Race Street. I have frequently felt unsafe on this street and the thought of increasing the speed limit, to me, is, it really does seem counterintuitive to all of my experiences on the street. So, so I would, I would tend to just, you know, I think, I support Brandon's motion, a further study. It would take quite a bit to convince me that we should increase the speed limit to forty miles per hour and I just, you know, be honest about that upfront. Dennis, comments and then Charlie?
In that there is a sidewalk and I assume it's, it's possible to use it as a multi-use sidewalk that parallels a street, how often do you, as bicyclists, use that sidewalk rather than the street and what's the difference in use?
A, a real bicyclist, you know, that's going out of town, you know, that's going out of town, is not going to get on the bike path for a hundred yards because their intent is to go out of town.
And you're hitting a person?
They're on road bike, yeah, and you'll hit a person. You're on a road bike and you, you're, your, your idea is, you know, a ten or fifty or a hundred mile bike ride, you know, depending on, on your conditioning, you're not out visiting the park at, at eight or ten miles an hour. It's two very different kinds of uses. You know, the, you know, bicyclists using the bike path are usually parents with kids. They're, they're folks who just want to go out at, at an easy pace in a, in a social environment. People on road bikes and/or mountain bikes that are, are out for training rides are never going to be on that bike path. I switch to using the bike, bike path occasionally, especially if I'm going, if I'm going with traffic and I'm headed southbound, I'll use the bike path sometimes on race between Windsor and Florida if I'm just sort of trying to, you know, if I'm moving slowly and, and still trying to get the kinks out of my bike or something like that and I don't want to have to worry so much about traffic and I don't, and there aren't too many pedestrians. But I tell you, as soon as there are pedestrians, I'm, I'm on the road. And here's the difference I was going to make, is the, the road between Florida and Windsor, race there is, is thirty-one feet wide. You've got fourteen-foot plus or fourteen and a half foot wide lanes. And one picture I don't show here is, you know, a car can pass a bike with three feet of clearance, basically, and hardly leave their lane. And it's thirty miles an hour, that's the speed limit in town. Okay, you know, to me, then you, you switch sides the road, you're on an oil chip surface versus the cement. You've got this crown, you've got this very rough surface and you're, you're, you're telling people, okay, you can drive ten miles an hour faster on a narrower road where there are as many or more bicyclists and pedestrians in that section between Windsor and the bridge. And to me, that is just inviting disaster to increase the speed limit there where people need to be careful, especially on those busy days. Now, you know, if we could change the speed limits and say, well, you know, there are bicyclists and pedestrians present now, you can, you have to go thirty miles an hour and there's nobody out there, okay, you can do forty, that's fine. But, but the other problem here is, is that, you know, without the speed limits there or if you're coming, if you're northbound, it used to be there was fifty-five miles an hour. There was no speed limit posted until you got right to Yankee Ridge. And then it dropped from fifty-five miles an hour, which is the, the rural speed limit, to thirty. Okay, and now it's set to forty there, so people coming into town are, are used to doing forty now. And that's what the sign says. So, you know, I see nothing wrong with, you know, forty and then at the bridge, we say it's thirty going into the park. You know, to me, the, the park at the bridge, it becomes part of the urban environment that's the rest of Race Street, not the rural environment that is the Yankee Ridge subdivision. And even if it is park on one side and the U of I plantation on the other, the, the usage is still an urban usage. And I think that, that has to come into play in, in our thinking in this. Thank you.
Okay, we have a motion and a second at the table and we have talked for about forty minutes on this topic. So is there any further discussion? I don't mean to squash further discussion, I just want to let folks know where we're at in terms of time. Okay. All those in favor of Brandon's motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? That carries. Thank you. We have a discussion on sidewalks, snow removal, and we do have a person, a member of the public who would like to speak. What we'll do is we'll hear from Public Works first, if we could. Please, just to get the report so that the person, Amy Aindu, could respond to that report. So we'll basically take the report from staff. If there are any questions, not comments, but questions, we take that and then we'll hear from the public and then we can discuss with the motion on the table.
Hey, I think most of you know Mr. Jim Kelly, but Jim is our operations manager and he's in charge of our snow removal, ice removal plan, so if there's technical questions or what have you, he's the guy to ask and he, and I put together this report before you. But generally speaking, we weren't sure what direction the council would take, but we thought we'd just try to explore options. And generally speaking, there's the option, of course, that was discussed this evening already, and that is whether or not you would by ordinance require some sort of mandate to citizens to remove snow in front of their home. There's a variety of nuances that go along with that sort of thing, so there'd be an ordinance passing. The second would be whether the city would remove snow, and there's a lot of varieties to that, whether you do all sidewalks, only certain sidewalks, only so many inches of snow would fall, et cetera. There's a lot of questions and variables. The third option would be, of course, do nothing or keep things the way they currently are. We took the liberty of just asking questions in the memo, not necessarily answering them, but just wanted to sensitize you that there are a lot of decisions to be made. It's not a, it's not an easy decision, it does require a lot more effort and research depending on how you'd like for us to proceed. But some direction we received was just, well, what is an order of magnitude, what are some of the costs if city crews, contractors, or forces were to do the work? And we reflected that in here and just kind of as a rule of thumb, it, our numbers that Jim worked on, and these are numbers based on the removal of snow that we do in front of city-owned property, which is about three and a half miles a walk. If you factor in the materials and the equipment and the labor necessary to do that, it works out to be about a thousand dollars per mile per vent is, is a good number to use or an order of magnitude a number. It's not a hundred dollars per mile per vent and it's not ten thousand dollars, but, you know, give or take, it's around a thousand dollars per mile per vent. So we mentioned how many miles of sidewalk along our arterial streets. Arterial are our busiest streets, our three-lane, four-lane, five-lane streets in town. Our collector streets are also our next class of busy streets that link neighborhoods to our arterial streets. And then we knew that in and around schools would be important and what we did is we took the mileage we have with our school walk routes that we have for every school in the city, and that's about thirty miles of, of walk. And we, you know, came up with a number for that. So I can assure you that to just take one average event or a three or four inch event or something, and if we were to do the arterials, collectors, and, and school walk route areas, quick... quick math is a hundred and twenty, a hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars. That's a big number that, when you look at just what we spend in salt each year, is maybe fifty-seven, sixty thousand dollars a year in a fairly busy season just for salt. There's always equipment costs and such, although we use our equipment year-round, of course. But we would have to buy specialized equipment for this. And generally speaking, those pieces of equipment are probably going to be fifty, sixty thousand dollars. And Jim's estimate is probably four pieces of equipment, you know, to do that type of work. Then you need the bodies to do the work. And if you want to use the Blizzard, and over Valentine's Day as an example, you know, we weren't done doing our priorities that I listed on the last page until like six, seventies later. And I don't know that we would want to reprioritize these priorities to get the sidewalks ahead of residential streets or what have you, or downtown snow removal. But just to let you know, we're real busy when you get snow, especially four or more inches. It takes a lot of effort to clear all those areas that we have to clear. So then you have issues of, you know, do you look at contractors or not? And as you would expect, you know, contractors are just as busy as we are when the snow hits. You know, they have their accounts, et cetera. You'd have to have people, you know, dedicated for this type of efforts, which, you know, is going to be costly. So there are a variety of examples of communities with ordinances out there for mandating citizens' removal of snow. We can pursue those avenues, too. I guess what our expectation is, in some direction, you know, do you want to explore, you know, option A, B, or C? And I suspect we'll need to get additional information for you to make a more informed decision. But at least this is kind of an opening volley as to, you know, where would you like to go with sidewalk snow removal? And we do have a lot of research that we did do on the Internet. We have, like, what, one hundred and ninety-seven communities in Chicagoland area do. We know what Big Ten schools do. So that information is available. We are, incidentally, the only Big Ten school that does not mandate, in some fashion, snow removal by residents or property owners. So that's just something to think about as far as how other Big Ten schools, if you want to use that as a benchmark.
We're the only one that does not.
Does not. Champaign or Urbana does not.
The mayor, and then Charlie?
Well, thank you for putting this together. I do have a couple of questions. When you're talking about the equipment costing sixty thousand dollars a piece, you said that was for tractors with snow removal.
Right.
What size tractors are you talking about? Little teeny ones that are sidewalk-sized?
It would be sidewalk-sized. There's two manufacturers that are pretty much the dominant manufacturers, Bombardier and Trackless. And they do make equipment, you know, that could fit on sidewalks. But that's what we've based those costs on, that type of equipment that we know other communities use.
Okay, because that sounds off the top.
It could be a blower attachment, it could be a broom, you've got a snow blower, you have blade attachment. And as mentioned earlier by Mr. Fausti, there are a lot of challenges in doing that, not to mention uneven sidewalks and vegetation encroachment, low limbs, you know, a variety of things that would make that a challenging effort for our.
You have to have the options of the equipment, whether it's a broom or a plow or a snowblower, because of the timing of the snow. The one thing you need to direct us to is when you want it done. We've all, snow is unique. When you fight snow, you have to have the timing. So if you go in and you have a large snowfall, you shovel your walk three or four times. You could do that at home. If you don't, you might not get it shoveled at all because it's already frozen to the concrete and other pieces of equipment need to be used.
Well, I appreciate the job that you did on the streets, and I certainly, you know, wouldn't ask our employees to go on another shift after working twelve-hour shifts. But we do have, I know Brandon sent out an email, there are volunteers in some cities in Colorado. Because some of the questions you asked, which are good questions, like what about people who are elderly or handicapped or whatever? And so I was sort of envisioning more of a community involvement in this, not just adding it. Have the city crews do the streets, which they're doing now, but see if there's some alternatives. And I brought it up at a UCAP meeting, and I got one gentleman who used to work for you to be a volunteer. And some people do have the equipment, and certainly, we'd want to educate people and not have them go out and, you know, bend a blade on a snowplow. But if there's other technology like brushes or something that would deal with uneven sidewalks, that sounds like a pretty good idea. Mayor Schwaheart and I had breakfast with the chancellor of the university, Richard Herman, this morning, and we were talking about sidewalks. And part of the problem, the university could clear off their sidewalks, but students couldn't walk on city streets in Champaign, is what they said. But I'm sure that, I know that a lot of streets in Urbana were really hard to walk on. So I appreciate what you've done, and I think this is just kind of like the beginning. And we know what some of the costs are, and I think we need to figure out what the best way to deal with this is. But, and who knows? We may never have this kind of a storm again, but it made life really difficult for people this last winter.
Charlie, you have some questions?
Yeah, well, we've had three storms in thirty years of this sort of magnitude, roughly. And one of them happened on January first, so it was fairly easy to deal with because the students weren't around. So it made life a little easier, I think. Fewer people out to trample the snow. A couple of questions for Bill and Jim here. When you, when you talk about the money involved here, were you able to, like, compare, did you ask Womack or the university what they spend per mile? Or do you have any other comparative figures yet from other people or from the stack of? So really, you're just basing it on your own experiences downtown Urbana?
There was, there was one that, one community that had a cost, it had about miles of sidewalk, maybe a little less than us, that was around a hundred and seventy thousand dollars per event. I want to say it was maybe ninety or a hundred miles of sidewalks. And I want to say it was probably a north suburban Chicago area that did that. It might have been Womack, I'd have to check. But the number of about a hundred and seventy thousand, I recall that being, so what that translates, you know, into per event, per mile, you could do the math, I guess.
I know one thing that concerns people is the problem with snow being kicked up into their freshly cleared driveway or onto sidewalks that are close to the road. How could we, you know, it seems to me that that's an aspect of anything we do that we need to figure out how to deal with. What can we do about that?
During the first forty-eight hours of this snowstorm, everybody loved us. The second forty-eight hours, everybody hated us. And they're really, we, our snow manual takes a look at every part of the city. So around parks, and anytime we can push the snow away from driveways, then we do it. So like Liel or Carl Park, down on Meyer Ridge, where that park is, anytime that we can go and push it so it's not a burden on somebody else, we do that. The Meadows. But other than that, you get half the snow from this street, and you get the other half goes on the other side.
I know one of the issues was, you know, with Liel School, for example. I was, I talked to the principal, and the snow, the sidewalk had been cleared, and then our plows came through in the middle of the night. And when the kids came the next morning, they couldn't walk on the sidewalks because the sidewalks.
Yeah, I discussed that with Oda.
Uh huh, yeah.
And he was just getting ahead of the game.
Yeah.
And we cleared that up.
Okay. So, yeah, yeah. So, but I know we got at least one letter from a constituent of mine and another comment from a friend who lives in another ward about snow being piled up at the end of their driveways. And, you know, these significant events, you can get twelve or sixteen or twenty-five inches of crusty snow at the end of your driveway, and you have to take an axe, you know, pickaxe to it to get it busted up. That, that's a little tricky.
I talked to many citizens after a snowfall.
Yeah.
And I always ask them, what do you suggest we do with it?
Yeah. I know that we don't have a river to push it into, so I understand that, yeah. I mean, if we had something to, you know, if we could push it in all into the boneyard, that'd be great.
We figure if we throw it, throw it fast enough, and they throw it back out with snow blowers, it'll get hot and melt.
Yeah, okay. Well, it's, problem, okay. Then another issue, of course, is, and it's been raised by Ms. Ishi in a way, and it was raised in a conversation I had with Jack Waller many years ago, is, you know, the streets are clearly the purview of the city. We don't ask the citizens to get out and clear the streets in front of their houses. And the city owns the streets. The city also owns the sidewalk, as I understand it. And, you know, it's interesting that communities can legally require their constituents to get out and shovel the sidewalks. I wonder if those sidewalks are owned by the individual or owned by the cities in those situations. And I wonder what would happen if somebody contested an ordinance and said, well, I don't own the sidewalk, so why should I be responsible for it? So.
Well, it's interesting that you bring up that point, because one of the things I was looking at as I was reading this is that an issue came up that might be analogous. I don't know that it exactly answers your question, but the city of Moline had an issue where the sidewalk was in disrepair, and someone tripped and fell and hurt, and was hurt, and sued the homeowner. And I think the homeowner brought the city of Moline in on, in the action. And long story short, the courts in the Third District Court of Appeals ruled that sidewalks are the city's responsibility. So in other words, the homeowner was dismissed out of the case. And the court basically held that it was the responsibility of the city to keep the sidewalk in good repair. Now, whether or not that translates as a direct analogy to snow removal, I don't know. But I just wanted to share with you that district appellate case, and I'm not sure if any other courts of appeal in the state of Illinois have ruled similarly.
Do you have additional questions?
Yeah, one last comment here is, one of the concerns I have in all of this is that if we have, you know, if we do have people get out and we require that they shovel their sidewalk, and you have this melting and refreezing issue, especially, you know, you've got a lot of snow and it's, you know, there's a lot of melt-off and it gets out on the street, then we're basically, and if you look at some of these ordinance, they all require that people, you know, when it's iced over, get out there with sand or salt or something like that. You know, the temptation's going to be to get out there with de-icer. And I've seen, you know, some of the apartment complexes and whatever use a lot of de-icer, and it strikes me as yet another environmentally unfriendly thing to be doing. And I don't know that, I want to be throwing all those chemicals out there on the sidewalk when, when you could just get out and walk on the road where the pressure of the cars and the snowplows are doing it, or where we already have a lot of salt being put down. You know, it just strikes me, it's not, unless, unless we have an environmentally friendly way to deal with, with that refreezing issue, that's a major concern that I have. Thank you.
Could I just ask a question regarding that, which is, if sidewalks were to be cleared by the city, would there be chemicals and de-icers involve salt, de-icing, et cetera?
You'd have to.
It's used downtown, correct?
Well, you wouldn't want to return to the area three and four times. You wouldn't have the.
So you'd move in, and you would put the de-icer in?
Again, it's all in the timing. Snow is unique. Everything has to be done at once.
Okay.
Everybody wants the parking lot done, the street done, the sidewalk done. You know, everything needs to be done at once. So, and once you get there and you go through the area, your salt or whatever de-icer you use hopefully prevents it from returning.
Okay.
...................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................
I'm walking my son around, I don't really feel comfortable doing that. So, many people in my neighborhood gave up on walking and started driving. And given that Urbana prides itself on being a walkable city, or a city where people commute by walking and biking and taking the bus, it seems like it would be a good idea to do more to keep our sidewalks actually passable. Now, professionally, I'm an environmental economist, and so I study problems where what you do, things that you do, the good things that you do benefit other people besides yourself. And, you know, that's why we have environmental policy, why we have things like the Clean Air Act and the Clean Water Act, because left to their own devices, just, you know, it's not that people are bad, there are lots of reasons. But, you know, there are lots of reasons people don't shovel snow, even though it would be a good thing for the community if they did, or if they could. And so, you know, professionally, I think that it's a good idea to have some kind of policy. Now, it doesn't have to be mandating that people do it. So, there are a variety of things that you could do. The city could do it, although clearly that's expensive, and it can't be cost-effective, because, you know, it would have to come later, and by then it's more difficult to clear the snow than it would be, especially in a four-inch snowstorm where any able-bodied person could clear the sidewalk in front of their house in half an hour without risking a heart attack. I'm not talking the blizzard, I'm talking the smaller storms. So, you know, there are other things you can do. You can subsidize the good behavior. So, give out free snow shovels. Have a rental pool of, of, so, the things, the automated things, snow blowers. Have, you know, have a pile of snow blowers that people can check out. And, you know, there are a lot of people who will do a whole block with a snow blower, but why should they have to go out and buy the snow blower? So, if the city had a pool of snow blowers, that, I think there are a lot of people who'd be happy to go borrow a snow blower, do their block, and return it for somebody else to use. So, you can subsidize it to make it easier for people to participate in the good activity. You can also provide negative incentives, and not punitive, but if two or three days go by and your sidewalk isn't clear, then the city will come through and clear it for you and charge you a reasonable snow clearing fee. Not the price gouging, "We just had a blizzard, snow clear..." But, you know, "We'll do it for you, you're elderly, you're out of town, whatever, we'll just do it." But then the city wouldn't be clearing the whole city worth of sidewalks. So, I urge you to do this, because it's just much safer to walk if the sidewalks are clear. There are good reasons to think that not enough snow shoveling happens. And there are lots of creative policies. You could come up with a hybrid where the city automatically does the high priority areas, the schools, the bus stops, the busy streets, like Springfield or Lincoln Avenue. Lincoln Avenue was a catastrophe. Oh my, oh, it was just terrible. And do those first, and then let people, you know, volunteer, do their good thing. And then when they don't, then just do it for them. So, and I'm happy to talk about this more, but now I'll stop.
Questions for Amy?
Oh, yeah.
Amy, you heard, one of my big concerns is the environmental aspect of yet more salt and stuff.
Right.
Has anybody come up with a de-icer or a melter that's environmentally friendly?
You know, that's a good question. I think that there might be an environment, a less harmful de-icer, but I would have to look into that. But, you know, even without the salt and the sand, and Ms. Ishii was absolutely right, even the shoveled sidewalks after the blizzard were dangerous because they were iced. But, they cleared more quickly than the sidewalks that were never shoveled.
Right, once the weather, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, and without sand or salt, you know, once the weather improved and enough of the snow melted, so...
Yeah, I fell on my laptop on ice that was hidden by snow in the second snowstorm, not the big one.
Yeah. It's, I had two friends who have serious compound fractures from this winter.
Yeah.
It's dangerous stuff.
And how, you know, you heard from Ron's comment earlier, and in terms of, you know, and we're the only Big Ten city that doesn't have a snow removal ordinance, which I think is interesting. Do you have any familiarity with any legal challenges that have occurred in other states on requiring people to remove?
I'm not a lawyer. Now, actually, I was going to ask, what is our policy for mowing lawns? The city doesn't mow the city right-of-way.
After, you're required...
You have to mow the lawns. And we have, we have an ordinance that says that the grass can't get more than three feet high.
Yeah, eight inches, actually.
And I don't know if that's enforced, but...
Eight inches.
Eight inches?
And it is enforced.
It's enforced. So, if that's, I mean, for goodness sake, if we can enforce a lawn mowing thing, why can't we enforce a snow shoveling thing, which occurs less frequently, right? Sorry. But I don't know, I'm not a lawyer. You'd have to ask a lawyer.
Are you finished with the questions, Charlie? Thank you for your input, appreciate it. So, now we get to the discussion part of the sidewalks, no removal. And I don't know, this could become a long, kind of circuitous discussion. I wonder if there's someone who has brought a motion this evening that we could start with, some concrete proposal? Charlie, did you bring a motion? Do we have a...
Oh, no, no, no. It says discussion here, discussion.
Okay. So, in that case, let's discuss this for 15 minutes, and I'm going to say when 15 minutes is over, and we can decide at that point if we want to discuss for another 15 minutes. So, I think Dennis, did you have comments you wanted to start with? Go ahead.
Just a couple of things. First, I think that it would be appropriate for the city to have basically a good Samaritan policy on snow removal. Right now, we have many homes in the rural streets of the town, or, you know, the neighborhoods, where no attempt is made to snow shovel. When I first came to town, I was told that actually there was a, the reason why that was true, and this is the first community I've ever lived in where people weren't really expected to shovel their sidewalks. And every place I've ever lived, people, you know, when it snowed, you got out and you shoveled, and that, it wasn't a big deal. But I was told here that there had been, that there was an expectation that citizens were held legally accountable for any accidents that might occur if they changed the condition of their sidewalks by snow removal. And now, I've understood that that is not true, that there's not, according to state law, that is not the case. But I was told that when I first came here. So, I'm wondering if we do need to have an educational policy, and Lynn, you were saying that, that, you know, it would be wise to have a running band on the bottom of the television set saying, you know, "Please, please shelve your walks. The city recommends that all citizens assist in snow removal in their areas." So, I think this would be a very important thing. The second thing is, I'd like to hear, and I haven't done a research on this, what the postal office delivery system's opinion is on snow removal from the curb or the sidewalk to the front door of the house. Now, I understand that if you don't shovel your front, your front walk and your steps, there's not a guarantee that you have to have mail delivered that day. So, I'm just wondering if there's a precedent in that. I think the city ought to do some research on that to find out what the, what our postal service requires of residents. And lastly, since I work in the southern part of the campus at the Illinois, University of Illinois, I notice that they have a very efficient manner of clearing sidewalks. And within, basically, half the day of a snowfall, there are small tractors with brushes or snowblower equipment patrolling all, every single sidewalk in the campus area. And perhaps those are the tractors that you say cost $65,000. But if the city would buy a few of those and have enough staff to man them to take care of the business areas of the city, I mean, I think that one of the most important things for the downtown area would be to have snow removal in front of the businesses, and the federal building, and the municipal buildings of the city. And I noticed that very many building, businesses didn't shovel their snow for the first day or two themselves. So, these are some of the things I think need to be looked at, and I think that the city should take a stand, a very proactive stand, to encourage citizens to participate in snow removal.
Okay. Charlie?
Luckily, we have the luxury of warm weather for the next six months or so to figure this out. We hope, yeah.
Hopefully, I get rid of it.
Yeah. One concern I have is, you know, is, you know, we've got global warming going on. One of the issues is, you know, we've had, you know, three, we had three snows in two weeks, which was unbelievable. I mean, I got to get out and ski like four or five times, which was great. And, you know, if I could count on this every year, I'd get new skis. But, you know, one of the supposed projections of global warming is that we will get more precipitation, and if that more precipitation's going to occur in February, when we typically have our coldest months, we might conceivably get more snow in that one month period than, and warm weather on either side of it, you know? So, if we get more big snows in a one-month period, we probably do need to come up with a policy on snow removal of some kind. I'm surprised that we're the only Big Ten school without something. I think we do need to come up with an answer of, you know, what are the legal ramifications of requiring it, much like we require people mow the right-of-way, for example. We do expect people to mow the right-of-way. One concern I have, of course, is that if the city were to get into the business of snow removal, and maybe that's appropriate in places where the sidewalks are very close to the street, and we're sending the snow to the sidewalk anyway from the streets, you know, maybe that's something we have to take care of. I mean, Lincoln Avenue, clearly, you know, the snowplows were basically burying the streets. Orchard, where Orchard Street, where one of the sidewalks is right up on the side, right up on the street, was buried. You know, I saw a poor guy with a snow blower, even he couldn't keep up with the snow, with the snowplows. You know, we don't have the personnel to get out and do the work. You know, Public Works has already maxed out. They've got everybody out that they can in trucks from all the different departments, unless we're going to expect the staff in the city building, you know, our police department, our fire department to get out and man the, man the little tractors and stuff. The only way I can see us actually coming up with something is via contract. We'd have to contract this work out for removal in those areas.
Mayor?
You know, the university was able to clear their sidewalks. I think we could work out agreements for them to clear maybe some other areas that are right around the campus. I think we could look at this block by, block by block and figure out the best way for each thing. Businesses who are going to clear their own parking lots could probably do the sidewalk. So, I think we should just work it out and be ready before next winter.
One thing that does gull me is the number of apartment buildings that I saw where they sent in a crew to clear the parking lot, but they didn't do the sidewalk in front. And that was especially noticeable a couple of apartment buildings on campus between Lincoln Avenue and Goodwin, where I walk a lot. I mean, there were a couple of places where everything was clear, because the university cleared it, except for in front of the apartment buildings, where the parking lots were pristine, but the snow was out there, you know, 12, 16, 20 inches, and you had to go out on the street to get around those spots. So, I mean, if they can send a crew to clear the parking lot, they can send a crew to clear the sidewalk.
Other comments from committee members? I just had a couple of comments. One is, Berkeley has a municipal tool lending library. And so, they've, they have a structure we might learn from for this particular instance. I'm not sure of every neighborhood, but I know in the neighborhood where I live, folks, there might be one person who takes responsibility for a whole strip of it. When I was out at Berenger Commons, I saw one family kind of take responsibility for a whole strip. I think that happens in different areas. And so, I think there, I do wonder if folks would take, if they had access to equipment, if they might be willing to kind of be a street captain, and they would take care of their street. I think of myself as an extremely able-bodied, strong person. I'm not too strong in upper body strength, but I was out shoveling snow, I think I shoveled snow for something like six to eight hours. I hurt my back twice. I was, it was awful. I physically, I mean, I am like a really, I think I'm quite self as a strong, physically able person, and I was incapable of removing snow out of my own front yard. It was actually pitiful, it was disgusting. I now have joined the gym, and I'm starting to work out and lift weights. In fact, my arms hurt from working out yesterday, because I could not believe what a weakling I was. So, I do want to put it out there that although not every blizzard is going to be like this past blizzard, I hope, even folks who are able-bodied like myself, using a snow shovel, which I swear was heavier than the snow that was in it, trying to shovel myself out, I was not able to do that. So, I'm concerned about requiring residents to do this without providing some kind of support for them, because I certainly was, I just gave up at some point, and McCullough, I don't think, ever got, you know, I mean, I'm just talking about Illinois Street and my driveway, it was horrible. I don't know what I had, but I went to Farm and Fleet afterwards, because I threw the shovel away, and they didn't have shovels anymore, they had sold out. So, if anyone has an extra snow shovel, I'm stuck. So, that one thing. And the second, I think, I kind of support at this point Lynn's proposal of education. And the reason why is, I moved here in 1995, I actually did not know until about four, five years ago, about the time I got on council, that you really were supposed to shovel your sidewalk. I really didn't know that. And so many people around me didn't shovel their sidewalk. I just thought, this is something that, when it melts, it melts. So, I think that we can definitely do more public education using PTV, et cetera, to let people know that it's strongly encouraged, and I think providing them the resources. And then we see where that stands, and, you know, consider something else. The other thing is, I did have a question, which is, do you know what it costs to clear the downtown per snow event? Do you have a sense?
The sidewalks, yeah, that number's in the...
Just for the sidewalks of downtown.
But what happens is, we do get in front of some merchants' buildings, because we don't lift the snow blower up just to go to the other part of the block for the city. So, we do do a lot of the Main Street area.
Where, but where's the number? I'm sorry, I didn't see it.
It's included in the 3.5 miles of sidewalk that we do.
And that costs, oh, I see.
$1,000 per mile per event.
Okay, so, okay, so...
That's where the number comes from.
Yeah, I think that in thinking about that, if we were to, that's significantly smaller than what I was thinking it was. So, actually, I was thinking of also primary routes, but it looks like if we were to do primary routes, we're really jumping up in terms of our dollar figure. Okay. Other comments, Charlie, Heather? Go ahead.
I was going to say, I think the university has an advantage on us in a sense that, you know, they take their dumpster trucks and attach plows to a lot of them, you know? So, those guys are out doing this, this snow removal on the streets. And then they've got a whole separate...
Sidewalk crew.
Sidewalk crew that, you know, they get from their, their greenkeeping, their landscaping group, you know? So, they've got a whole pool of people that we don't have to get out and do this. And I don't know if, in talking to Chancellor Herman, you've had a chance to throw this idea of getting their help with some of the, oh, you did, okay.
But, Mayor, do you want to... Yeah, yes, he did say that they could help with that. So, that's why I'm saying we could work out something with the university. Certainly, if we can tie this to physical fitness and weight loss, I'm sure we can get a lot of volunteers.
Heather, go ahead.
Well, my comment is that I don't want to see us, Mets, pass an ordinance that mandates people shoveling their drive, or their sidewalks if they're not able-bodied people. Danielle, maybe if they had a shovel for people who were five, five or shorter, then you wouldn't have had those back problems.
Might have been it. I can blame it on the shovel, that's good.
It's the shovel.
So, I can quit going out to the gym.
I do consider myself able-bodied, and yet I did, my back was sore, to say the least, after. I think it's, can be discouraging to shovel your sidewalk, and then your neighbors don't do it, because you've done your part, and then your area, your 10 feet, is passable, but the neighbors isn't, so people are going down your sidewalk. I just don't want to see us be a city that says, "You have to do it, or you're going to get fined," you know, "a certain amount of dollars per foot," or whatever. I believe that most people like their sidewalks cleared, like they like their grass taken care of. So, most people aren't going to do it. I think that Lynn's approach to education is probably a pretty solid idea at this point, more than mandating people to do it, especially if they're not able-bodied.
Okay, Robert, and Dennis?
Well, I think, as we looked at this, and I didn't, I was at the meeting where the mayor was with UCAP, and I recognize their generosity in trying to establish some kind of crew to do this for the people in the neighborhood. But I think moreover, I think it'd be important to communicate a good neighbor policy. I know in my neighborhood, there's people that can't physically even cut their grass. And I just make a point in just doing it for them. So, I think a good neighbor policy, increase the friendliness of the people around you. And I think that would solve a lot of the problems in terms of getting your job done with the snow, if your back is not all out of whack, if you don't have the arm strength to do it. But it's good, it's...
Next year...
Next year, you can handle it.
Show it off.
But I agree with Charlie. I think that some kind of plan needs to be put in place. I think we're in a situation where we don't really understand the complexity of global warming and the impact of that. They said the snow events could be more extreme, all kinds of weather events are more extreme. There's a lot of things we need to think about in terms of how we address a lot of things. But when it comes to snow removal, I think a good neighbor policy would be the first step, and I kind of go along with Lynn on that.
Just a really brief one. I do live on a city corner, so I have two sidewalks. I have a three-car garage, and so, a two-car garage, plus an extra side park, so I have a huge driveway to clear. And I went across the street, and I cleared the, up from the street to the steps for one of my neighbors, who's an elderly person. And then I ended up helping out, helping another neighbor dig her car out, so she could go to work. So, I had plenty of exercise that morning. And I would suggest that we might encourage or get also involved, the district health, the health district, to be a part of the educational program of our snow removal neighborhood, you know, good neighbor policy, because they could remind us to do simple things that would preserve our health and make it easier for us. For example, I, a couple of years ago, bought a back brace, which is like something you put on, you know, like a wraparound, you know, and it has a Velcro fastener. And I use it, you know, when I have to lift furniture up, and, you know, when I'm doing my raking. And it's because I just found it helps keep my back from hurting so much when I come home at night, you know, after I... it, you know, when I have to lift furniture up and, you know, when I'm doing my raking and it's because I just found it helps keep my back from hurting so much when I come home at night, you know, after doing all this work. And so, there are simple things that we can do. There is, there's a snow removal shovel that has two wheels at the bottom that you can buy and I, I've seen these before and where you, you push, you push the cart in front of you, you're not lifting anything and when it's filled, you back it up and then you dump it in a convenient location. So, with a combination of safe practices and better equipment and wearing perhaps a brace when you do heavy shoveling and learning how to lift weights, these are things that the health, our district health department can help train and share information about and it would be very helpful for the citizens.
Okay, Charlie?
In, in the interest of moving this along and since I was expected to bring a motion anyway, somebody should have told me that. I'm sort of curious as to how we want to proceed. Is this, you know, we've asked a number of questions from staff, they've got a pile of, of stuff that we could, you know, those of us who are interested can go look at it and, you know, one of the questions I have is, you know, we have these other Big Ten cities, the, Big Ten university cities we can compare ourselves to, a couple of things, they probably have a big rental population too. I think that's something we need to understand fully is, you know, we have a lot of rental property in town. How do, do the landlords tell the tenants that they have to shovel the snow and, you know, how, how do some of these things get handled? How do the, how do apartment complexes get dealt with and so on? Are they part of, is there some special language in these ordinances for them? So, I think it'd be worth going through and distilling some of these things. But we're also going into budget, budget stuff in the next couple of months. I know we, we've got a couple of other special sessions that we've got planned coming up. Is this something we want to take up again, say, in June after the budget is dealt with?
Yeah, go ahead, Robert.
I think the staff has really done a lot in terms of looking up the, the numbers and crunching the numbers and they can tell you what it takes to get the snow removed, the equipment necessary. That's all pretty straightforward. I think what we need to hear from is the public on this and what type of, how they would like for us to proceed. I think the burden of this is kind of falling on them a little bit, but we don't want to overpower them, you know what I mean? So, I think we need to open it up to a public forum, so let them come, give their input. I know, you know, staff can come up with all the numbers we need to tell us what it takes to get the job done, but what are the people willing to do in the community? And I think that's important.
Laurel?
Um, Neighborhood Safety Task Force already has this on their agenda, sidewalk safety for April 17th, but I think that we could refine some of these ideas and look at some ordinances and some practices, some volunteer systems that other cities use and I'd like to contact every neighborhood association and get input from them, but I think we should have a public hearing on it, but let's develop some of these ideas a little bit more first.
Okay, so it sounds like there's been a lot of, definitely kind of a urging consensus in terms of we could do more to educate the public. So, that's one thing. The second is we have a Neighborhood Safety Task Force, April 17th, and perhaps that group can help facilitate the pulling in of input from the public. I had also, with Robert, had anticipated hearing from more people. I certainly heard from folks during winter event, sometimes, once it's warm, you know, it's warmed up, it's not in, you know, you don't think of it as an issue until the next season. So, if we could perhaps leave it in the hands of this Neighborhood Safety Task Force to work with staff and bring back a recommendation, it sounds like there may be some patchwork possibility. MTD School District, we have downtown, the university might be able to extend its boundaries some and then we can look and see where we're at there in terms of what might be missing. Does that sound like a consensus amongst the committee? Go ahead, Heather.
I, I think so. The one thing that I don't want to see is burnout from our, our staff who already does a great job on our streets and having them think that they have an extra burden of clearing sidewalks and saying, do I really want this job that much? And we have such a good, a good staff that I would hate to, to lose any of them due to having them think that they have too much weight to carry that other people could possibly carry.
Okay. Other comments from committee members before we move on? So, at this point, there's not a motion on the table, but there's understanding that the Neighborhood Safety Task Force will take this up and we won't take any action at this point. Thanks for your research on this and bringing the information forward. Next, we are back to planned unit developments. There's a discussion on ordinance number 2007-01-003 and ordinance to repeal section eight dash three, uh, thirteen dash three, planned unit developments of the zoning ordinance of the city of Urbana, Illinois and to adopt a reinstatement of section thirteen dash three, planned unit development of the zoning ordinance of the city of Urbana, Illinois. This refers to a planned unit development tax amendment. We're basically repealing a whole section and putting it a new section as requested of staff. This refers to plan case number 2020 TO6 and we'll hear from community development on this. Go ahead.
Thank you. Just briefly, after our last council meeting, we took everyone's comments, we met with the mayor, we worked out what we thought was a great solution and then we had legal staff review our proposed solution. We did run into a snag, but we've recovered from that. We have revised and so we've come back with something that's just as strong. So, specifically what we're proposing is to keep all the changes in the development standards, but to still have a two-step review process, a preliminary plan that will be reviewed by the Plan Commission and City Council and a final plan that will be reviewed by the Plan Commission and City Council in the approval of each. Previously, we had looked at combining that, but we ran into a problem with that legally. Also want to point out one thing. The mayor's also very recently made another good suggestion. One I'm passing around is on page two oh one, is the addition of just two words, but the concept is this, we have a conceptual preliminary plan, we have a, have a more specific final plan and the mayor wanted to make sure that the building footprints or building locations was part of the review for the preliminary conceptual plan. So, with that, if, if you all are okay with this, I'd like to present this at the next or an upcoming city council meeting, I think the next one probably, for, for final consideration.
Charlie and then Brandon?
Yeah, Robert, thanks. I, I'm pretty much ready to go on this and if, if Brandon doesn't do it, I'll, I'll motion to send it to council. But with, with the mayor's change here. Now, I know that one of the issues that, that led to this was that staff found itself bypassing the preliminary review process and combining the preliminary with the final. Do we expect that to continue to happen or is the preliminary aspect here streamlined enough that we will get the two-step procedure followed?
Yeah, you hit the nail on the head. Actually, what we're proposing now is the conceptual and then the specific and so we're not duplicating the same thing. Right now, our, the way our ordinance is written, you basically turn in the same thing twice. So, what we're proposing is we would avoid that.
Should I make a motion or you want to?
Please.
Okay. I move that we send this to council with a recommendation for approval.
We have a motion from Charlie and a second from Brandon. Brandon, did you have comments?
Just that I really appreciate staff's continued work on this. I think this absolutely meets the intent of where we all stood last time, you know, which is that there's added public notice and that there's, there now are two steps again, but that we've differentiated between them and made the first step simpler so that the neighbors have the basics they need to have early input on the project and say, you know, how's this gonna buffer and are these lights gonna shine in my windows and get those issues out on the table? So, I completely support this and I'm glad we're moving ahead.
Any other discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, that carries and we'll see you at a council next week. Thanks, Robert. We have ordinance number 2007 dash oh three dash oh two nine and ordinance approving a combined preliminary and final subdivision plat. This refers to the Brick Houses Road subdivision, plan case number 2019 dash S dash oh six and this was sent from the March 19th council. I'd like, we do have some input from the owner of the property, Debbie Insana, and I guess, I think it would be useful to hear if there's a staff report first and then we could get input from Debbie and then let's have a discussion. Go ahead, Robert.
Well, I want to thank everyone for the patience, including the applicant. She's also had to come to a lot of meetings as well. I just want to give you an overview of what we're proposing. In terms of the street width, the city staff would be okay. We would accept a waiver for twenty-eight feet width for the street rather than the normally required thirty-one feet. If the council chose to approve a waiver for a twenty-five foot wide street, we would strongly request that parking be prohibited on the street. So, that would be preventing sort of questions about possible blockage and to help protect safety in case of emergency response. In terms of sidewalks, in terms of sidewalks, we would agree that deferral of sidewalks throughout the subdivision, we would accept that and just have sidewalks put in throughout the subdivision all at the same time. People should know though, that, that means that someday a homeowner is gonna have to pay to put in sidewalks in front of their house, so we should be really explicit about it in terms of the, the homeowner's covenants and the plat as well. Make sure it's noted on the plat so that, we give people as much notice so they don't put in landscaping and things like that to the extent possible. We should be clear, because it would, it could set a precedent, that this is a unique situation where there's no sidewalks anywhere near here presently and it should be based on the fact that this development is, is different in terms of its needs for, for sidewalks. In terms of sewers, city staff is, we still recommend installation of sewers, sewer lines and capping them. We would note that should the city council decide to waive the requirement for installation of sewers, it would be really critical, we feel, that a special service area be set up in advance so that in the future, whatever responsible party could come in and require sewers to be put in, there would be a mechanism to do that, although that's not the preferable solution because that is just a whole lot more complicated and a whole lot more work down the road. We still feel like it's, it's better to put them in presently. So, with that, if you have any questions, be happy to answer them.
Questions, Laurel and then Dennis?
What about the proposal from Bill Gray? To have the EPA consulted first?
Right, well, we.
Did you adopt that? I don't, I don't see it in this memo.
We would, Bill Gray had some information about the issuance of permanents by the Illinois EPA, but I don't know that necessarily needs to be part of the subdivision plat approval. It's my understanding.
Bill, did you want to comment?
Well, just to clarify, I, I did speak with EPA last week and a person, the head of, the head of the permit section and is a qualifying response, but they probably would issue a construction permit under the circumstances of this particular subdivision. The existing public sewer is about twenty-four hundred feet away. It's less than a half a mile away and in their opinion, they don't feel that there would be a reason to deny a construction permit for this subdivision. But the caveat I relayed in my email was, is that if for some reason the permit was not issued, then as Robert is suggesting, we would have a special service area in place and if and when the sewer was within, you know, three hundred fifty feet of the subdivision per our current codes, then that would trigger the point when a public sewer should be installed and those property owners in its subdivision would be assessed. And three hundred fifty feet happens to be right at the intersection of High Cross Road and Airport Road. That's about three hundred fifty feet away, so that would be the trigger point for some reason. But it appeared probable that the construction permit would be issued under these circumstances.
Dennis, go ahead.
If a sewer line did come to, it would be coming from the, from the west toward High Cross Road and there's a pretty deep building, there's a dell where the, where the road definitely goes down pretty low, long incline where it brought the blizzards and then it starts to climb up again. So, if the sewer line was, was sent in that direction, would there be additional costs required by, by the subdivision owner or just by the city because there would have to probably be a pump station or some way to pump sewage from the low spot up the hill to, so it could go to the.
To the processing plants. Is that gonna be a difficulty or is that gonna be a concern?
Oh, there would definitely be a need for a lift station, a pump station to serve, you know, this area based on the topography out there. We have pump stations, you know, in various parts of the city, Champaign, Urbana, Savoy. It's not unusual at all.
Does the city assume the responsibility of those intermediate steps?
No, we don't. No. I mean, it may be built by a subdivider, a developer as part of the work. It's rare that the city would get involved with the station, but, or if we would get involved, we would certainly have those monies recaptured, which is the identical scenario we've talked about in East Urbana with us and the sanitary district going up front and splitting the cost for an eight million dollar project to serve a very large area now. But the answer to your question, tip, without exception, a public pump station would be eventually conveyed to the sanitary district and be theirs to own and operate and maintain, but built probably by someone else.
I guess I only had one other question and it's, it's not one that we haven't even discussed before and I may be, just for my own clarity. If a subdivision is placed in, is there a requirement that there be any streetlights along a street?
No.
Okay.
Other questions from committee members? Go ahead, Charlie?
Just to follow up to that bill then, so if sanitary sewers were required at the point that the UCSD was within three hundred fifty feet and a lift station were required, would the build, would, would the, would the Brick House development then be responsible paying a, for a lift station too? Or would the UC, would the sanitary district pick up the cost of that lift station?
That's kind of a difficult question to answer because there's a variety of ways that things could unfold, but undoubtedly, I mean, right now, a developer pays interceptor cost recovery fees, plus they pay a connection fee. So, there's fees that they're paying in essence for sanitary district work. So, I think what probably would happen and I'd rather maybe have the sanitary district answer this, but there'd probably be a master plan, an updated plan that would need to occur in this area that would kind of map out how the whole area would be sewed, okay? And part of that would, plan would include a pump station and at some point, the district, similar to the lead they're taking right now in the east and south of Urbana, perhaps with the city, perhaps without the city, but in some combination thereof, they would probably go ahead and put that pump station in and enforce main, once a plan has been identified and then those costs would be recovered as development would occur, similar to what we'd be doing, like I say, to the east and south. So, I think to answer your question, it'd be a sanitary district maybe slash city lead to do something like that and, and then the area would be extended, the sewers would be extended.
And what about all the other properties, not just this particular property? Would everybody in the vicinity within three hundred fifty feet or whatever be required to hook up?
No, only if they're subdividing. Now, if the sewer is available and it crosses an existing home or there's homes on Airport Road, for example, if their septic system would fail for some reason, then the public health department would require them to connect to that public sewer. If it's. health department would require them to connect to that public sewer, if it's adjacent to or across their property. But I think to answer your question, and maybe Dennis's question, the Brick House subdivision wouldn't directly be paying for that lift station. They'd be paying for the sewer on the street itself and extension of that sewer, three hundred and fifty feet to get to where that public sewer access point is at the intersection. But it's the other fees, when you get a permit, that one pays, that in essence pays a per rad a share, a portion of the share of that pump station, any other, force main, any other facilities to get that sewage to the treatment plant.
Okay, Robert, and Dennis?
Bill, I had one question on, as, I think I'm clear as to your comment, and you said there would be a likelihood of them issuing a permit to do this. Is that correct?
Correct.
Is there a chance they would not?
Sure.
Could happen.
And that, if that chance were to occur, our fallback position is what the memo described.
Okay.
The establishment of an SSA.
Now, if, if we were to do this in conjunction with the existing systems that they're going to have, will it impede the operation of that in any way?
I'm not clear.
I'm talking about the, you know, you're going to put a sanitary sewer piping in, and you're going to cap it, and then they're going to have a drainage system in the same area, or, you know, a septic system in the same area?
That's fine, I mean, that one.
But it wouldn't impair the?
No.
Okay. Thank you.
Go ahead, Dennis, and then Brandon.
And as the sewer line is extending itself in an eastern direction toward possible service to the Brick House subdivision, currently, that whole area is in Summer County. It's not city-owned property. Then that's not an influence, or it doesn't affect the city's interest in extending sewer service to those outside the city limits. Is that correct?
No different than the areas we're looking at currently, east of High Cross Road and south of Windsor. It's the same scenario.
Does Summer County bear any responsibility for the sewer line also?
Zero. It's a sanitary district.
It's a sanitary district.
Outside our corporate limits, it's the sanitary district responsible.
Okay.
Yeah, I actually had two brief questions for the petitioner, for Mrs. Insana, and I was wondering if she could come up really briefly, if she's willing, to just answer a few questions and sort of give her updated thoughts.
Great.
I have a whole lot of stuff to give you and tell you.
It's Insana. So Brandon, why don't we start with your questions, and then we can go to your presentation?
Okay.
Yeah, there's two particular questions I, I just wanted to know. One is on the issue of the side, I'm sorry, of the street width. Given, if the choice you had was to either do the twenty-eight-foot street with the waiver that was already agreed on, or to do twenty-five foot and have signs or something in the covenant, some way of telling people that there was no parking, which of those two options would you pick? And does that trade off, I mean, is that trade off sort of clear to you that?
I already wrote it in the covenants that people are prohibited from regular parking in the street. And I also made sure that they're going to put their garages back far enough so that they can park beyond the front building line of their house, so that we're not looking at cars. Looking at cars is not a good thing. So that's already in there. That's already taken care of. And I would like to point out that it seems like you didn't have a problem with the twenty-two foot wide race street, which is a regional thoroughfare of some sorts, where you've been talking about raising the speed limit, and twenty-five feet isn't sufficient for a dead-end country road? I'm surprised.
Okay, thank you. My one other question is about the issue of the forest, the reforestation of the woods, and part of why some of these waivers are things that we're supporting and ready to move ahead on, is that the part of the goal of the project is to reduce flooding, to not have pavement, but to, you know, but to have some forest land, to have wetlands, have places where the water can go, and sort of solve some local, if not some regional, flooding issues. And so part of the justification for the project is precisely that. But I, one of the issues that came up in some discussion this week was just how long that reforestation might happen, or whether in some future date, if you sold the land or parts of the subdivision were sold to other people, is there ever the possibility that the area that was reforested, I guess it's about ten acres that's left, would be subdivided and developed in the future? And is there any thought you've given to land trusts, or are there already protections in the covenants you're planning, so that, so that the reforestation and the open space that's part of the plan is sort of locked in for future generations?
No, I didn't put them in there, because it really doesn't, about, in about ten years, ten to fifteen years, those trees will be, you know, twenty feet tall. And when you have a parcel of land that looks like it's fully wooded, and you try to take it to the city council, or to the planning commission, and say, "Look, I want to cut down all these trees so we can build houses," people are going to tell you no. So I think that that's probably not something that needs to be put into a trust. It's going to become something that's just valued by the people in general, and they'll say, "Well, you know, why would you do something like that?" And I knew that phone would ring as soon as I was up here. I knew it. So, no, I wasn't going to put it in trust. I was just going to let it become valuable to the community, so that it would be protected that way by people like you, who would say, "No, you can't go in there and cut down all those trees and build more houses."
Okay, thanks. The one last issue was, I guess, did, do you understand some of the information that Bill Gray got from the I E P A? And is, is that starting to sort of make sense, or are there other questions you have?
I think he has a different opinion than, than what I have, from talking to Mike Little of the sanitary district. There's been a lot of people talking about the sewer line being only half, half a mile away over by Somerset and coming towards our property. You also have to remember that it's developers that bring the sewer line in. There has to be developable property for them to get it within three hundred and fifty feet of our house, our houses. There isn't any. Are they going to develop Brownfield Woods? How are they going to get it there from that direction? Are any of my neighbors across the street who are on three and four acre lots, are they going to develop their property? No, because that's three hundred and fifty feet south. How is that sewer line going to get there from that direction? The only place it can come is the way Mike Little told me that it would come, that the most natural way to do it is from the east, because we're in a different watershed. We are not in the same watershed as the sewer system that serves Somerset, that's over there to the east, and we're not in the same watershed as the one to the south, the new one that's essentially in the Walmart area there, you know, that will be coming up from the south towards our direction. That's not us either. That's not the one that's, that would naturally serve the area that we're in. So that's why I've been telling you, it's going to be fifty years before it gets there. And at that point, the only way it's really going to get to us is from the east down Airport Road, okay? So the fact that, I don't know how anybody's thinking it's ever going to get to High Cross and Airport. There's no developable land there. There's no developer that's going to pay any money to put it there. It isn't going to happen. And that's okay. It's sort of a seam. It's where the watersheds come together, and the sewer will naturally end where it's run out of developable land heading east, okay? The same thing will happen when they locate the new pumping station, which Mike Little told me will be somewhere on the north side of the sailing ditch, and it will be east of us, because if you look at the sailing ditch, it runs to the east. So you can see that the water will flow from where we are downhill. You want a gravity-fed sewer, that's the way it's going to go. So they'll put the plant down there, the pumping station, east of us, and it will develop its way back towards where we are. When it gets somewhere close to us, it's almost at the end of the line there, because, as I pointed out, to the west of us, there's Brownfield Woods. I mean, who's going to want it past us? Nobody, okay? And they're saying if it gets within three hundred and fifty feet of us, then we have to hook up to it. But the property just to the east of us is owned by the University of Illinois. Somebody would have to develop that first. How is that going to happen?
Thank you.
Okay.
Were there other questions before we move on? I had just a couple of questions for Bill Gray and staff. One question was the parking issue. If we go to the twenty-five feet, you've suggested that there be no parking, and I just want to ask the question, I know, I heard what Ms. Insana said about et cetera, but is parking on one side instead of both an option with twenty-five feet? I believe a lot of the, a lot of the streets in my neighborhood are twenty-five feet and there's parking on one side of the street. So I just wanted to understand if you were talking about both sides or just one side of the street.
Sorry, I was doing two things at once.
Okay, just referring to parking on both sides of the street, correct? Not just one side? Prohibiting parking on both sides?
Bill has.
Our subdivision code prohibits parking on both sides on a twenty-five-foot-wide street. That's what the code says.
Okay. On both sides of the street, okay. And then the second, it had a little bit to do with Brandon's question to Ms. Insana, but I also want to ask staff, is there any guarantee, as you understand it, what are guarantees at this point that the other half of this property that is now slated for conservation in this model, that that would not be developed? What are, what are the guarantees that that wouldn't be developed in the future? Is there anything within what we're agreeing to here, or is there anything within the county restrictions or whatnot? I just want to understand.
I'm not aware of any guarantees that it could, would stay that way in perpetuity. It would be a ten-acre tract. It would have road frontage on Airport Road, and it also has a small piece that would touch on Brick House's road as well. So I would envision that some year down the line, I don't know how long that would be, you know, whether it would be five years or twenty-five years or however long, but it seems natural that there may be a road that would, in other words, finish the other side of the horseshoe. Maybe a road would come in from Brick House's road and then circle back towards Airport Road for, on that ten-acre tract. But I don't know.
Is there anything that prevents, is there anything that prevents that from happening?
While it's in the county, they would have to get county zoning approval in order to subdivide to that extent. And if they could get county zoning approval to subdivide in the county, then we would review it in terms of its, the improvements as a subdivision.
Okay. Ms. Insana, did you want to respond to that question?
Well, yes, because this, I think, in a very short time, will become indistinguishable from your rural residential district that surrounds it, or that's to the south of it, that the city of Urbana has labeled as something they want to protect from development. So I can't imagine that anybody would see that, or would say at that point, that it's a reasonable thing to do any more development in there. And if I'm still surrounded by my same neighbors, of which I still have one that is objecting to the twelve houses that we're trying to put in there in the first place, they won't, it won't get rezoning, because, you know, if you have frontage protests, too much frontage protest from the neighbors for what you want to do, you don't get the rezoning. I only got rezoning because my neighbors supported what I was trying to do. And if they don't get the rezoning, then they wouldn't even end up here for flat proofing.
Okay. All right, I'll reserve my comments, then. Ms. Insana, you sounded like you had a number of things you wanted to present to us this evening. So let's hear from you, and then we can go into a discussion of how to move forward.
This would be. For me, I've been coming through. And I realized today that some of the ones I've said since the first comeback was to open for the bottom folks, and you are apologized, and the ones that didn't get activated.
Thank you.
Yeah, go ahead, Robert.
Sorry, I just wanted to.
No, that's fine.
Clarify something we talked about just a second ago. In the comprehensive plan, it shows on the north side of Airport Road is residential. On the south side of the road, Airport Road, it shows rural residential. Nonetheless, both of those are two residential development types. They may be at different densities, but both of them are residential development types. So even in the rural residential area, we envision that that will develop as residential, albeit probably either very low-density or conservation subdivisions. So if you, if you look on Exhibit D in the original, apologize, in the original packet, Exhibit D was future land use in the comprehensive plan. This subdivision, it does show this subdivision for residential development in the surrounding area as well. And then again, to the south of Airport Road is rural residential.
Thank you. Go ahead, Ms. Insana.
Okay. Sorry, I have to read this, or I'm going to forget what I want to say. So I was reading the News Gazette last week when I encountered another article about failing septic systems and the cost of retroactively installing sewers. This was in Ludlow. I know the city of Urbana will point to this situation in Ludlow as more evidence in their insistence that a future sewer connection to Brick House's road is inevitable. I did a lot of research last week about septic systems and sewage treatment plants, and I spoke with Jeff Blackford, the septic systems expert at Champaign County Environmental Health Department. Did you know that twenty-five percent of all homes in the United States are on septic systems, and more are being built every day? Sewage treatment plants were developed not because they're better at treating sewage than a septic system, but because they allow greater population density. A sewage treatment plant uses electricity to pump sewage to a central location, to mechanically separate the sludge and scum from the water, this happens naturally but slower in the septic tank, to aerate the sludge so the microbes work faster, the same microbes that are in the soil, and to pump the water into a nearby stream or river to begin its journey to the ocean. A septic system these days is quite different than the perforated pipe on gravel systems of the past. The failing systems around the county that now require sewers were built on small lots for small homes thirty to fifty years ago. The tanks are too small to accommodate additions to the house, to accommodate the extra burdens of garbage disposals, dishwashers, Jacuzzi tubs, and water softeners. Septic tanks are often hidden in the ground, and you have to dig around to find the lid to get them pumped. Wastewater flowed into the lateral fields before it had a chance to separate and follow the field. The lots are not large enough to allow for a replacement field, and that's why the older areas with failing septic systems need a sewer connection. I've mentioned that we might expect the technology of sewer treatment to change in the coming decades. I was surprised to see how much of the technology of septic systems has changed in the past twenty years. In nineteen eighty-seven, we built a new four-bedroom house with a septic system in Kansas. The system cost eleven thousand dollars. It was a large concrete tank with three hundred and fifty feet of lateral lines, which were two-foot-deep trenches with perforated plastic pipe on gravel. The entire system was underground. You could not tell where it was by looking. Last Thursday, I had J and S Septic in Urbana give me an estimate for the new four-bedroom house that we will build, and that's what is in the packet that I gave you there. It has a two-thousand-gallon concrete tank with an interior baffle, an affluent filter that can be easily removed and cleaned. That's what, so you've got a picture of the filter in there. Here's the estimate, looks like this. These are risers on the top of the tank, so that you can get at them and clean them out. This is what the filter does, and you can remove it from the tank, so that the stuff doesn't get out of the tank and get into the field to follow it up. It has three risers with inspection ports and clean-out openings. The lids are flush with the surface of the lawn, so they don't interfere with mowing, but can easily be removed for inspection and pumping. The lateral lines no longer use gravel, but instead consist of these plastic leaching chambers. And that, that was an interesting development, and apparently came out of a shortage of gravel that they developed these in the nineteen seventies. There are these, I think there's a picture of them, but there are these plastic chambers, and they sit on top of the dirt. There's no gravel underneath them, and they're open at the ends with caps, so that they can be inspected and cleaned out. The end of the line is also capped with a riser, allows for inspection and clean-out. This is an all-gravity flow system, and it costs nearly three thousand dollars less than the old gravel system we installed twenty years ago. If, in spite of all the ease of maintenance features, a homeowner still manages to follow his field, an additional field can be installed next to the first one for about six thousand dollars. A switch valve will be placed, so that if the new field is also overcome, the original field can be used again. A lateral field will recover if it's given a few years' rest. This switching can go on indefinitely. There were questions last week about that, and some of the engineers said, "Well, you know, it lasts thirty years, and then you got to put in a replacement field, and then that lasts thirty years." And people wondered, "Well, how much land do you have to have to keep doing this?" But you don't have to, because after a period of probably four to five years, the... But you don't have to, because after a period of probably four to five years, the stuff that got washed into the original field finishes decomposing, and then it just becomes inactive, and then the field is ready to be used again. So if you have this switch valve replaced, if you put in a replacement field, you can just, you know, be a real idiot with your septic system, and it will continue to be able to function by switching it back and forth from one field to the other. A septic field, the field itself, for, for a four-bedroom house like we're going to build, is about 50 by 65 feet. So if you have a half-acre lot, you have room for a pretty good-sized house and a driveway, and a replacement field and the original field. So if anybody today wants to build a septic system on a lot in Champaign County, that's what they would require you to have. And that's a system that can last forever. Does not have to be hooked up to, it's not going to fail in a way that it can't be repaired on-site. In the 1990s, the New York State Energy Research Development Agency did a study that determined that a single wastewater treatment plant uses 1,700 kilowatt-hours of electricity to treat 1 million gallons of sewage. In the U.S., in a household with water-saving devices like the required 1.6-gallon flush toilets and Energy Star appliances, the average daily per-capita use is 50 gallons. For a family of four, using a gravity-fed septic system instead of centralized sanitary sewer treatment, it saves 124 kilowatt-hours of electricity per year. And the resulting cleaned wastewater is allowed to seep back into the ground and replenish the local aquifer. I told Jeff Blackford of the Environmental Health Department of the city of Urbana's concerns about septic systems and the insistence that Brick Houses Road subdivision would someday be hooked up to a sewer main. He said that would be a shame, because septic systems are the best choice for low-density development. Central sewage treatment is a solution for higher-density development, and is not as environmentally friendly as a properly permitted and installed septic system for low-density developments. Champaign County does not permit the kind of conditions to occur that exist in the failing systems that the city's so concerned about. The bigger issue with rural developments that has not been addressed will become quite evident in three to five years. That's when all the private well owners in Champaign County start screaming that their wells are dry. In the case of a septic system, once the soil conditions are determined to be appropriate or not for the success of the system, those soil characteristics do not change over time. But well water is a dynamic situation. A well is drilled to a certain depth based on the level of the water present at the time of the drilling. If these big ethanol plants start sucking water levels down, bringing municipal water to all the rural properties will be critical. We have had personal experience with private wells on two properties we owned in California. The first was a 40-year-old well in which the well was, the water was poor quality, it had to be pre-filtered, softened, then filtered again. The pump failed, had to be replaced, the well had to be chlorinated again, then the casing inside the well cracked, and we were sucking mud. We spent $10,000 in repairs for that well. We put a new well on another property that cost $14,000. It was 175 feet deep. We've had three homes with septic systems of varying ages. I am looking forward to having one again. Having to live with a septic system educates the owner to be more conscious of the environment. We have also owned three private wells. I hope to never have a private well again. The energy-efficient, sustainable nature of on-site septic system wastewater treatment is consistent with Brick Houses Road subdivision's commitment to sustainable development and green-building guidelines. Our development project will bring municipal water to our existing rural neighbors. In the dialogue of how to deal with rural development, the city of Urbana needs to quit fretting about replacing perfectly good septic systems with sewer pipes, and start focusing on how to remedy the impending well water crisis. Thanks.
Okay, thank you. Questions, Brandon? Go ahead.
Actually, I don't have any particular questions. I would just recommend that, I'd like us to, as we did at the last meeting, when we started on discussion, which I'm ready for if other people are done with questions as well, that we talk one at a time, and just talk streets, sidewalks, sewers, and sort of cover one, and get some consensus, and then move to the next.
Okay, yeah, I agree with that. Let's do it in that order, streets, sidewalks, and sewers. Starting with the 25-foot versus 28-foot street width, are there comments that committee members have on that? Or is there a motion that people would like to put forward? Dennis, then Brandon.
I guess I'd make a motion that we accept 25-foot street width. It seems to me that not only is Airport Road shorter, less wide than that, but we've heard that Ray Street is, and it seems that if you're going to prohibit parking on the street, there should be adequate passage for the cars.
Actually, let me ask a parliamentarian question. Is it possible for us to vote on the individual pieces, so we can understand where we-
Good question.
Can we, can we vote on the individual pieces, sending portions? Okay. So what I hear is that there's a motion on the table to allow the 25-foot street widths. Is there a second for that motion?
With no parking on either side?
With no parking on either side?
Second.
Okay, so we have a motion, a second, 25 street width, no parking on either side. Dennis is the motioner, Lynn Ernst is the secondor. Laurel, comment?
I just have a question, and that was raised by the staff about how would this be enforced? I mean, if someone's having a party, and they have a lot of guests, and they park on the street, what will happen?
Probably nothing.
Does the county not?
You could call the sheriff, but I don't know that he'd care.
I guess that indeed, if the sheriff came out, there'd be a ticket. And I think that, of course, that, that is concern, it depends on the, it would depend upon the lifestyle of the, of the owners of the home, and you really can't guarantee that, because you don't know who your, who your purchases are of the lots. But if it's part of the neighborhood-
It is. But I also, I would like to just mention again that, you know, that the 25-foot street width accommodates traffic in both directions in parking, and that's going to be rare. I mean, it's not like, if, for example, you're talking about a fire truck. If a fire truck were to be coming, it's not like they're dealing with traffic going in and out of that subdivision constantly. I mean, and the, the road is straight, and it's long, and the houses are far apart. So if there was a fire truck coming, it'd be very easy if, for, for any oncoming traffic to get out of the way. There won't be that much. It's very little.
I think the concern is that if there was a party, and there was parking on both sides of the street, a fire truck could not get between the two parked cars on a 25-foot street. That's my understanding of what the concern is. So we have a motion, a second, and, and I do want to just establish some of the, the terms of the conversation. People do need to wait for me to call on them before they speak, and we want to hear from the council, and if the committee has questions for you, they can ask those questions, but, and you can put a finger up if you have a response. But I, I want us to have some kind of order to this conversation. Brandon?
Yeah, I just had a comment about the motion. I think parliamentary-wise, this is a committee meeting, and I think it would be best, and maybe this is already understood, that the phrasing would be that we, we actually, in making these motions, we ask staff to create the necessary language for both the waiver and the condition. In this case, there's a waiver to 25, and there's a condition that, that we have, that we restrict the on-street parking, that we ask staff to draft the language and bring it back. I think that's sort of the intent, and that then we could see that language at a council meeting where we'd actually be able to vote.
Okay. Is that your understanding, Dennis?
Yes, I think, I, that's a reasonable clarification.
Okay, and Lynn is also nodding her head. So that's fine with the motioner and secondor. Brandon?
And if I could further add, I think in doing that, you know, I'd like to hear what staff have to say about, in, in writing how that exact waiver and condition works, staff could get a chance to explicitly say how the on-street parking restriction is going to be handled. If maybe the condition is that we are requiring, as, as Ms. Insana's already said she would do, that the condition be written into covenants, so that there's some rule in the covenants spelling out, so that everybody can see in clear writing that there's no parking on the street. Or maybe the condition would be written in such a way that, that it actually have some enforcement ability, so that there would be the ability to call a tow truck, and the cost of the tow truck would be assigned to the person who lived there if there were ever a, a problem with cars taking up the street or something. So if, anyway, I think, I would leave it up to staff to, in crafting the waivers and the condition wording, to do each of these in, in the right way.
Okay. Comments on this motion? Dennis?
And I guess that would also be interested to know if it would be appropriate to have posted signs.
Okay, so that's something staff can consider as we move this forward. Are there other comments specifically on the street width issue? Okay, I just have a quick comment, which is, in trying, I think it's important with every single waiver we give, that we provide the reasons that are particular to this project, so that we have the flexibility to look at other projects differently. I don't, and so therefore, what I see are the particulars of this, of this piece is, one, because of the intense flooding in this area, it is in the public interest to minimize impermeable surfaces. And I believe that's a piece of what we're looking at. I would say the same thing when we get to the sidewalk piece. The second is that it's a cul-de-sac in a rural area. The third is the, the small number of houses on that cul-de-sac and the large square footage of the properties. And then the fourth, and this is, I guess, I'm going to ask staff as they come back to us to guarantee this, the fourth really has to do with the conservation vision of this subdivision. I currently don't see, although Ms. Insana has given us a vision of what that looks like, there's no guarantees whatsoever that you won't sell this tomorrow, and it'll become something else. There's no guarantees that you'll actually plant a single tree, et cetera. So a lot of what I'm considering is something on paper that has no guarantees. So I would like for staff to, to discuss this with the petitioner, and to have some, because the conservation piece is something we keep coming back to in our criteria, that we figure out how to make sure that that guarantee is there.
I'm going to make a motion to let that go separately.
What's that?
I've got a note to make a motion.
Okay, so, okay, so Charlie intends to make a separate motion. We'll, we'll get to that then. So any other comments about the 25-foot streets before we, oh, Ms. Insana, go ahead.
I've also mentioned that the county standards, which were developed for this type of density, recommend this, that, actually, this is bigger than they're recommended. They feel that it's safe, and that the highway township commissioner and the fire department think that it's sufficient without additional concerns about parking or whatever.
Okay, thanks for that input. Any other comments? If not, all those in favor of sending this piece to council next week, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? That carries. Next, we'll take the sidewalk issue. Is there a motion that someone would like to put on the table?
I can make that one.
Charlie?
I move that we provide for a waiver to allow no sidewalk construction on both sides of the, of the street and residential developments, with the proviso that sidewalks will be required when they appear on Airport Road. And I believe there's some staff language already that's been prepared along these lines.
Yeah, and could I just get a, before we get a second, could I get a clarification? You, and based on the staff recommendation, that it be a deferral, is that correct, instead of a waiver?
Right, so, yeah, that we defer sidewalks to a time when they appear on Airport Road.
Second.
Okay, so we have a motion from Charlie, and a second from Lynn. Any discussion on this issue? Dennis, and then Brandon.
I think that it would be important to clarify whether your intent to defer the sidewalks, and then when it was appropriate to build them because of the development of sidewalks inside, on Airport Road, whether the deferral is for both sides or one, a single side, and if, which, if it's one side, which, and at which compass point would you be deferring them?
Okay. Is there an answer to that question?
I'm thinking that if sidewalks appear on Airport Road, that you'd want sidewalks on both sides of, of the street here.
Okay.
But if somebody thinks otherwise, Brandon, yeah.
Okay, so I, um, did I-
I'm willing to discuss that one. I, I can, I can go either way on this one.
So it's not explicitly part of your motion at this point? Okay, Brandon?
Yeah, we'll figure that out.
Go ahead.
I mean, staff could comment, but I think the Plan Commission had already said it was reasonable to just waive entirely sidewalks on the west side of Brick Houses Road, because there were no lots there. If in the future that were subdivided, we'd see the subdivision, we'd see the plat, and there'd be a discussion of our codes, and about where streets and sidewalks would go in the future. So I think the deferral would only apply to those sidewalks on the east side, where in the future, when there are sidewalks on Airport Road, we'd ask that the east side of Brick Houses Road sidewalk be constructed at that turning point.
Just to check with staff, is that correct, that if those were developed, the plats would come to us? Would they not, because they're in the county?
If they would, if they were further subdivided, it depends on the extent of the subdivision, if, whether it was just one or two lots, or we were talking about multiple lots. I would like to make an observation, though. If, if sidewalks are going to be installed at some future date because they're needed at that time when there's sidewalks on Airport Road, I'm not sure why it couldn't be installed on both sides of Brick Houses Road.
Okay, Ms. Insana, and Charlie?
There are lots on the west side of the road. We don't intend to sell them for some time. So they're already there, they're already on the plat, that you, you already got those. But I think that in the spirit of the conservation, you know, thing here, is that there is a point that they may never be needed on Brick Houses Road because of the low density of the development again. That we agree that they will be needed on Airport Road at some point, but I don't know that they should be tied together to say that when they're on Airport Road, they should be on Brick Houses Road, because there may never be a demonstrated need for sidewalks there.
Charlie, is that, can you clarify your motion?
Well, I was, well, one, well, one question I had for staff here was, if, if sidewalks were part of this, and it were only on one side, the east side, how far around the cul-de-sac would the sidewalk have to go? Would it be around, you know, all the way around the cul-de-sac and end at the, at the last house there, or at the entrance to the 11th? I think it's, you've got seven, four, and, and your property, or is it, is that right?
That's right.
Seven, yeah, so it would cover the seven properties, not the four. So, so, so if, if the language would, we should at least cover those seven properties. And in answer to, to Ms. Insana's issue is about, if sidewalks appear on, on Airport, I think the issue is that the, that there's more of a community that's developed, it'll, it'll be a walkable area, people will be interested in walking as, in the neighborhood, in and out of the subdivision. And in terms of, I think, a, a comment from the Plan Commission, and I was at the, the meeting where they, they discussed this, I thought was very, very appropriate, and they said was that even though the sidewalks are fairly far from the house, they do encourage a sense of neighborhood, a sense of neighborhood. So I, I think that I'm only willing to bend on, on waiving them on the, on essentially the short side, and, and literally, when, when sidewalks appear on Airport Road, I would want to see something that covers the seven other properties.
Okay, comments from Heather?
Can you restate your motion? About having these-
Okay.
Go ahead.
The motion would be to, to waive sidewalk requirement on the four properties on the, on the west side of the road, require sidewalks on the, and defer sidewalks on the east side, seven properties, until such time as sidewalks appear on Airport Road.
Go ahead, Heather.
And, and can you give your reason behind not waiving them altogether?
Because the sidewalk would basically go to nowhere at this point, that because it is a development all by itself, with only seven to 12, well, eight houses with Ms. Insana's property, and potentially 12 properties, again, to minimize the environmental impact.
But her, her question is actually the opposite, which is, why not waive them altogether and never require them? Is that correct?
Isn't that what you're-
Well, I'm just saying defer it until somebody, you know, in the neighborhood decides that they really think that sidewalks are necessary there. I mean, if, if you're trying to cut down on the, on the, you know, amount of pavement in a place, and you're going to require right now, in a place where it's going to be low-density, and even if people are going to be able to walk on Airport Road, which is great, and that is something that should definitely have sidewalks when it's agreeable to, it's still okay to walk in the empty street, and I'm telling you, it is going to be an empty street.
Okay, so just to, I, I hear your comment. The, the issue on the table, I want to make it clear. You have an opinion, you made that opinion clear, that's different than the motion, the motion that Charlie restated. And Heather, did you have a comment on that?
Yeah, I mean, my comment is that, I mean, if you look at, at, in Urbana, on Evergreen Court, there's duplexes in there, aren't? When I was growing up, there were not sidewalks, and my grandma lived there, and we would walk through the neighbor's backyard, and I, I guess, I'm having a hard time understanding, if we want a conservation district, and we don't want a lot of concrete, then why are we going to ask for sidewalks at all? Then why not just waive them altogether? I, I just don't understand that.
Okay.
It, it seems like we're biting our noses to spite our faces. We're saying, let's only do 25-feet roads instead of 28, because we don't want so, you know, so much concrete, but let's have sidewalks. It, it just seems silly. It, it just seems silly to me that, that we're asking her to put sidewalks in, I, I, it just seems, on seven lots, it just seems really strange to me.
Okay, there's several hands. Bill had his hand up, and then Dennis, and then we can hear from Ms. Insana. Bill, go ahead.
Couple points of information. Typically, the trigger point, there's sidewalk deferrals, we've done them frequently in the past, especially if it's a sidewalk required adjacent to the collector arterial street. And the trigger point has always been either through council or city engineer requirements that they now be installed. And that trigger point is typically because their sidewalks adjacent are at that property. So that's the trigger point, not when residents feel like it should happen, it's when walks are on Airport Road. The second point of information is, is that in the deferral motion, I'm, wanna make clear, or the motion should be clear, that we're also deferring sidewalks that the developer is required to install on the north side of Airport Road. Because they're subdividing, that sidewalk too that's required, that, but we're saying it's deferred. And the person or entities that pay for that sidewalk are the adjacent property owners. So rather than the entire 12, 13 lots paying for it, what's gonna happen when the sidewalks go in, the five-foot wide walk on the north side of Airport Road, is you're gonna have lot 12, 13, which is whoever owns that, 11 and 1, pay for all that sidewalk, rather than spreading that cost now, which I understand why. But, so remember, there's deferral on Airport and deferral on the cul-de-sac.
Yeah, and I would leave it to the developer to include those projected costs in their, in their homeowner's, uh, covenants, sorry, thank you, I'm tired and I'm losing it here.
Okay, Dennis, I can hear it from you, and then Robert, sure.
Yeah, I, I, actually, Bill was sort of saying what I was thinking, that actually, we don't have now a rural conservation district guideline for subdivisions. What we do have is subdivision guidelines, and they require, generally, the city requires sub, sidewalks on both sides of the street standard. So the fact that we're waiving them for the future is significant. And because of the layout of the land, it'd be, it would make sense that if they're gonna be on the east side, they come up and continue and cover lot seven like, like Charlie suggested because that takes care of any sidewalk activity on the, on the loop at the top of the ball. And these plots are, it says here that they are not for sale at this time, but they're potential plots. So I think that's an appropriate thing. And also, yes, it's, the city does have requirements, and the city actually requires sidewalks on both sides of the streets for all developments. And the fact that we're waiving them at this point and requiring only on one side, I think is a considerable benefit for the subdivider.
Okay, Robert, you had a comment?
My comment is, just because it's a conservation subdivision doesn't mean that people don't need to walk anywhere. People still need to walk. And in a true conservation subdivision, typically, alternative trail system is provided, so that there's an alternative means of getting around. And now, you could say that because there's nowhere to walk to presently, we could defer it for a period of time. But at some point in the future, when the sidewalks on Airport Road are built, logically, there's gonna be a system of somewhere to walk to, some destination to walk to. And then at that time, that trigger point would also mean that the sidewalks within, on Brick Houses Road would go in, so that, that way you can walk to that destination, whatever that might be.
Okay, I, I have a question, which is, how, how do we compel the building of sidewalks, especially on Airport Road, but also within Brick House, at that trigger point? How is that done? Because I know with, for example, Berenger Commons, the developer was supposed to put in sidewalks, he has not put in sidewalks, I've talked to him about it, he's, and to this day, I mean, even, even with the development on that corner, I tried to compel him to finish the sidewalks and he wouldn't do it. So, so that's a situation we have outstanding where, you know, people can't walk along that street, and so you see there's a mud path there. Similarly, I don't want us to come up with that kind of situation in the future. So what is, what is our way of compelling the homeowners in this area to actually set, to put in sidewalks in the future?
Well, you happened to hit on maybe one exception to the rule with Berenger, and incidentally, we are working that out. He's committed to paying for the cost of the sidewalk. The problem is it's not an easy installation, so, but I'll fill you in on those details later. But, no, it's typically a resolution or an ordinance passed, you know, by the city council that would mandate that, that adjacent property owner and the plat and covenants would, you know, have stated that it's a deferral. And, and now there's action taken by city council that it's time now to put the sidewalk in. And, you know, when this will occur, who knows? It could be five years, it could be 500 years, we don't know. But it probably would be part of a reconstruction of Airport Road, you know, to concrete or asphalt, curb and gutter, that sort of thing, or maybe it isn't curb and gutter, maybe it's still ditches. But the point is it'd be some improvement, you know, not unlike what was identified, you know, in the Route 130 Plan. You know, someday, High Cross Road may be improved, two lanes, but improved roadway rather than the 20-foot or 22-foot wide Chippens Hill Road.
Okay.
So that's what I would envision, you know, that there would be, you know, some type of project, and it could be many, many years.
Okay, but you do feel comfortable that there, there's a way to compel?
We have those mechanisms in place now.
Establishing, okay.
That would, would trigger adjacent property owners to pay for their share. We've been doing that with subdividing that has occurred, especially in a mile and a half for years.
Okay, great. Charlie?
Bill, another question. Have we got, uh, substitute concrete, substitute materials instead of concrete for environmentally more friendly sidewalks yet? Is there something that works in our location geographically?
The city of Urbana hasn't tried any alternatives. I'm not aware of champagne at this point in time. The one product that I've read quite a bit about is, is kind of a rubber material in and around trees because of the flexibility needed. But as far as porous pavement, is that what you're referring to or whatever? I'm, I'm personally not aware of that type of installation on sidewalks in, in this area.
I wonder if historic brick would be a solution on a Brick House Drive?
So we have a motion on the table, thank you. And a second, is there any discussion about that before we move forward with that motion? The motion is to defer sidewalks, waive sidewalks on the, on those four properties that are, are not yet sold, defer sidewalks on the seven properties on the east side until Airport Road is developed. And defer sidewalks on Airport Road. That's the motion on the table. If, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? That carries. Next, we'll talk about sewers and trying to move us through this in an orderly, inefficient fashion. Is there a, let's, can we start with a motion? Is there someone who wants to put forward a motion for consideration at this point? Drum roll, please. Okay. The chair gets to do it, that's good. I'm not sure exactly, we can go round and round on the sewer and septic system for a very long time. So I'm a little bit uncomfortable, it's just leaping into another discussion without some kind of motion on the table. So what I'm gonna do is give you some moments to think about it, and I'm gonna move to Charlie's motion on conservation, and we'll come back to sewers. Bill?
Just a, yeah, a comment on the sewers. I don't think staff has ever challenged, you know, the workability validity of private sewers. I mean, that's not the issue here. They can potentially be effective for years and years and years, okay? But the issue is, is that our subdivision code requires that a sanitary sewer be installed and capped when a public sewer isn't immediately available. That's what's at issue here. So it's a matter of do we, as a council, support what the code says for these types of subdivisions? There may be more in the future, there've been some in the past. Can install that sewer now? Or do you choose to not require that sanitary sewer to be installed now, but to defer its installation? And the trigger point again would be when a public sewer, whether it's from the east, south, northwest, I don't care what direction it is, but if it's within 350 feet of any point of this subdivision, of this 20 or whatever acre subdivision it is, okay? At that point, then we would institute a special service area that would trigger the installation of a sanitary sewer to connect to that public sewer, and all the 12 or 13 or whatever number of lots are would be assessed. And they'd be assessed probably by their EAV, their equalized assessed value is probably what would, would trigger it, and that's how that, that cost would be paraded. What the cost would be in the future, we don't know, but that, those are the trade-offs, is do it now or do it later? I think that's distilled down, it's not a question of are septic's better than, you know, public, really operated treatment works? That's not the issue. It is, do we wanna follow our subdivision codes or not?
Okay. Brandon, and then Charlie.
Bill, there wasn't in, in any of your research and conversation, there wasn't any way to pay now but install later? Okay, the choices are do pay and install now, or pay later and install later? Okay, thank you.
Charlie?
Yeah, I guess, since I've, I've spoken about recharge issues in the past, and one of the problems I have with the sanitary district is that all the water that it treats ends up in a different watershed that has no chance of recharging the Mohammed Aquifer. I think that's a, that's a something that the sanitary district needs to look at, and we need to encourage as part of a, a regional water study. I also, I've lived with septic before as a kid. I know people in the area who live with septics, and, and, and they do very successfully with it. The way I look at this sewer requirement here is that it's in effect a, an insurance policy. Should something happen unforeseen with the, the septic system and so on, there'd, there'd be some, some insurance policy. Now, given, and this is a question for Ms. Insana, is it, given the, the value of this property, the costs being associated with building these essentially custom houses, what's wrong with another $5,000 per house to make sure that you essentially have this insurance policy in place?
You're talking about actually installing the lines now?
Yes.
Because I think that, that, that we could be doing that all wrong. I think that it's quite possible, in, in my, you know, studying the area and trying to figure out how a sewer line would get in there, I think it could come in from the north somehow. That's the, probably the best way from that, from that property, the 46 acres that's north of us. If we went ahead and put in our lines right now to, to go onto Airport Road, they'd be backwards. They'd be sloping in the wrong direction.
Okay, and, and, you know, in, in the questions that I've gotten answered from UCSD staff and such, the impression I get is that the sewer is gonna be on Airport Road. Whether it comes from the east or the west, it's gonna be on Airport Road.
It's gonna be on Airport Road, but it may not make it as far as our house. If there, if you have kind of something that you call a, a, you know, an area that you wanna protect from development.
Right.
Okay, on the, on the net. And so it's going to come from the east towards the west direction, what force would bring it as far as where we are? I mean, why would somebody say you need to have it here? Who's gonna pay to bring it there?
Yeah, well, I, I think one of the issues here is that, that, I'm, I'm trying to figure out what motion to make here, and maybe I'll go to Bill here in a second. The, the, you know, we don't know which way it's coming from. We don't know that the university won't sell its property. I mean, they buy and sell property all the time. I mean, I belong, I've worked for crop sciences, you know, the South Farms is moving, so I've watched all of that transition and how they do it. Property gets traded. There's no, nothing that says that the property to, to the east of you is gonna be with the university 25 or 50 years from now. You know, there's no guarantee. And, and should it sell, it would be probably prime development property.
I'll tell you why, Bill, in a minute.
Okay, well, you know, so, so, you know, I don't know. If you can give me a good reason, if you can tell me that, well, you know, and part of the problem is that the, the sanitary district doesn't have a, a plan for this area, so I, I concede you that point. I think that's a problem here. But if you can show me that it is gonna come from the, from the north, then, then you have a point. And so I'm very torn about, about whether this is, is needed or not. But again, I fall back on the issues, that these are expensive houses that are probably gonna be put up, custom houses, why not put something in, even if it is wrong, on the, on the, yeah, as a insurance policy? And I think...
Bill, I wanted to hear from you. You had a comment on this issue?
I mean, the sanitary district engineer and the developers engineer and myself can sit down and look at this, but I'm probably 95% certain that the sanitary sewer would start at the high end of the property and flow to the low end of the property. That's normally what happens. And whether the sewer comes from the north, south, east or west, I can pretty much assure you that at some point, if this area is to be sewed, there'd be a connection point at the low spot in the lower end, okay? Unless you wanna collect it there and have a small pump station and pump it up the hill to the north end, fine. But those details can be worked out, but you want gravity in your favor, and this site is pretty well-defined as to where it slopes, where it drains to. But it'd be fine, you know, it, it's crazy, we have to design the thing in the council floor here, but I mean, our, the three engineers could get together and work this type of detail out, which we work on in other subdivisions. Okay? I, I think that's pretty reasonable. I think the issue still remains, does the council wanna confirm that sewer should be installed as part of this project or defer it? Or waive it totally? Those are your three options. That's what the motion should be, but let's not design it here tonight.
Yeah, I think, I think with, with Bill's comment, I can make a motion here, once...
Okay. Dennis, you had a comment, and then we'll go to Charlie for a motion? You can make a motion if you'd like, you have the floor. Go for it.
And, and my reasoning is similar. First of all, the high end of the property is on the north side. We've all talked about how the attention base is gonna be on the southeast corner, southwest burn, because basically...
Basically, that's the lowest part of the property, so to, to make the, if the obvious thing is to have the sewer line, if it was to put in, to drain to the south. Also, even though to the direct east, we have university property, which may probably not be developed in near future, on the south side of Airport Road, we do have a large piece of property that could be rural residential. And at the ridge, there's a ridge there, and then it starts going downhill. There's woods, and in the woods, there is private property and their homes in the woods. So it's likely that there would be development or connectivity via the south side of Airport Road. And the, the sewer line might have to cross the road to reach that, but it's probably gonna come from the south side of Airport Road and probably from the, from the east, and we don't know when it's gonna happen. But I think it would be probably the most sensible thing for, most responsible thing for this city council would be to, to request that the sewer lines be put in at the time of the, of the development of the subdivision and to be capped, because we know pretty sure that the, that the collector connection is gonna be at the south end at Airport Road. And for $5,000 a lot, it doesn't raise the cost of the sale of the lot an appreciable amount, considering land prices in general, to have the assurance of this. And, and also, the, the lines that we'd be put in, being plastic lines as I understand, they, they're gonna last for a heck of a long time. They're inert, so I think my suggestion is that we would require the, the sewer to be put in and capped until needed.
Second. So we have a motion and a second. A motion from Dennis and a second from Lynn, which is that we would require them to be put in at the time of the development and capped. So we would not allow this particular waiver in this case. We have a motion, a second, is there discussion about that? Ms. Insana, would you like to respond?
Yes, at last week's meeting, my engineer was talking about, and some of the council members brought up the possibility of bringing lines around the back and using pumps from inside the house and that they could be put in with two-inch pipes instead of the traditional larger sewer pipes. And that's an option that might be better at the time when, you know, decades from now, the, wherever this sewer line comes in. But we will not be able to do that at that time because, you know, you've already got something else in place. I, I really think that the projected future sewer development is so far in the distant future that to put something in there now means that we've totally limited our options to only that and nothing else.
Okay, so we have a motion. So we have a motion, a second opinion from the petitioner, or the comments from the committee members? Dennis?
Okay, well, here's a question. What's the feasibility of putting a main line up Airport, not Airport, but up Brick Houses Road, and leaving it up to the individual homeowners to connect, run their own lines at their own expense when the sewer is activated from their septic holdings, no matter where the connection has, would have to lead them, even if it was a 50-yard, you know, a 27-foot or a 50-foot connection to a sewer, sewer line outlet?
Although, I, that's a question for staff. I, I'm a little, we have a motion on the table and a second, and you have a question for staff to clarify whether or not you're gonna withdraw your motion? That's what I hear.
Well, I'm still saying, yeah, I guess, I'm still, no, I'm still saying we need sewer lines.
Okay.
What I don't know is, do we have to lay the entire line, including the connection, to the back of the house?
Okay.
Or do we just require the main, the main-
That's debatable. What we would want is a public sewer in the right-of-way that would have services to the property line. It would be totally up to the developer if they wanna extend it beyond the property line.
Okay, so this would be up to the property line? Clarification. Okay, are there other comments from the committee before we take a vote to send this to council? If not, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye?
Aye.
All those opposed? That carries unanimously. And last, Charlie, you did have a motion you wanted to make?
Okay, well, I wanted to know what the status of, of the fifth waiver was, which was the, the maintenance and operation of stormwater detention basin. Did you, is there final language on that? Cause that, that was one of the things that we had asked to be brought to us this week.
Robert, what's the, turn it back to the memo. Which, what page are we looking at?
Right, if you look on page six of the recent memo.
Okay, so the very last comment of the memo, if you look at the-
Right.
Here, Charlie, right here. Right here.
But essentially, we are working on it, and I don't see any reason why it can't be worked out, the specific language.
So we don't need, we don't need number five?
We don't need number five then, right? We don't need to worry about that? We just don't drop that?
I don't think we need to, to waive the maintenance agreement.
Okay, so, so we, we're not sending, okay, so-
Okay, so that's taken off the table.
Five, five is off the table, okay. The sixth issue, which isn't in here anywhere, but is, is there language on what the township is requiring about the entrance way to, to the street? Is that included in, in, that's a-
No, but we can have that in the actual ordinance.
Okay, do we need a motion to direct you to include that in this? Probably be best to go ahead and include that, a motion to make sure that the language is included here to meet the township's, the road township's, uh, design criteria for the entrance to Airport Road.
Is that a motion?
Remember that? Yeah, that's, that's a motion, yeah.
Okay, so Charlie's motion?
I, I guess I just wonder from staff, is that, that's normally their responsibility and covered by-
Okay, so a motion is not required?
We don't need, okay, we don't need anything there, okay?
Okay, so you withdraw your motion?
Yeah, okay. I was just wondering, and I know that there was some discussion of that, okay?
It's a claim, it should be a recommendation, it would be in ordinance.
Oh, it is in the ordinance, okay.
It should be in the ordinance unless you want to change it.
Oh, no, 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 as long as it's in the ordinance somewhere, that's fine. Okay, that's what I wanted to know. Then the last thing is, okay, we don't know anything about how this property's gonna change, you know, 10, 20, 50 years down the road. We don't have this conservation, a rural conservation thing, which is something we'll be developing, hopefully with the county in the next couple of years, maybe even faster than that. Obviously, we need to have something like that. In the meantime, I'd like to see some kind of agreement that maintains the conservation aspect as proposed by the Insanas, included in some kind of language as part of this, of the motion that goes to council. So I don't know if, if that's something that can be done or not, but things change over time, and, and frankly, I'm only willing to support this whole thing if the development is limited to the seven, four, and one, I think it's seven, four, and one, is that right? That are, that are 12 total properties is being developed, so that's the question I have for staff, and they're gonna go confer here about how to do this.
Are you saying as an outgrowth of?
Well, I'd, I'd, I'd like to see this thing limited, this, this development limited to the 12 properties, that, to the 12 lots that are described, plus the, the, the conservation area, the pond, so that we don't have a situation where 10 years, or the next owner of the main property, the big piece, says, "I wanna subdivide this," and basically flips the, removes the conservation aspect of this whole thing.
Mayor? And then we'll hear from the petitioner.
Could the motion be, that that be brought to the council? Developed and brought to the council?
That, that's what I'm trying-
Or does it have to be done, I mean, cause I don't know if we could work it out at this point.
Well, not tonight. Yeah, there would be a motion to, to direct staff to-
Okay.
Bring us that language for, to, to the, to the council, to the next council meeting, where this whole thing is going to be-
Okay.
Okay, is that a motion?
I'm waiting for some feedback from staff here as to whether it's doable.
I don't know if that's what-
I don't know yet.
Oh, you don't know yet, okay, so, I'll make a motion-
Well, it's fairly, I think it's a fairly vague motion to ask staff, and they could come back and say that something isn't doable, but I think you should ask them to consider-
Okay, I, I move that, that staff be asked to develop language that guarantees the conservation aspect of this development.
Okay, we have a motion from Charlie. Is there a second on that? Oh, I will second it? A motion and a second, and Charlie, the motioner, would you like to speak to it?
Yeah, I, my concern, of course, is that things change over time. The Insanas aren't gonna own this property forever. They may have intentions of trying to transfer it to Park District, or, or the, the county in some way, but we have no guarantees that that will take place. The only thing that, the only guarantees that we have as a public body are to get it in writing. And so, I want something in writing.
May I, may I be heard?
Excuse me, yes.
May I be heard? I'm, I'm wondering, with all deference to you, Alderman, is, if we could couch it in terms of, that the issue would be researched, rather than the absolute language, because we were just having this discussion, we're not entirely sure how that vehicle, what that could look like, in terms of, is it something that's, you're saying that your waivers are contingent upon it? Is it a separate contract between the developer and the city? I, I frankly don't know. And so, I, before saying that we need to give you the language, or that that's part, that guarantee is put in place, that we have some period of times where you research the issue-
I will defer to, to whatever language you need this to say, so that you can figure out what we can do.
Okay. I don't wanna, I don't wanna say you're, I, I can't state a motion, but I just wanna say that I would like to, that maybe, instead of that, we have to create language that, that the issue be researched, is, is what I'm saying.
Okay. So, the, so the motion has been accepted, a change in the motion has been accepted by the motioner, that, that, that we direct staff to research incorporating conservation into what comes before council? And I accept that as second, or Dennis?
It occurs to me that possibly, in 30 years, the land, even if it's owned in the Insana family, might be divided among children or something. We don't know. And, it's very likely, I, I could foresee situations where the property might indeed be subdivided. I think there's no way of guaranteeing, or making a person convert their personal property into some kind of like park, when, you know, in the future. I, 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 and I guess that's why you guys are having this big discussion up here, because what can we basically force a private property owner to do with their property, other than, you know, surrender property rights? So, I don't know if there is even a precedent, or we can even ask that a conservation park be made in perpetuity. Maybe we can, they're gonna come back and tell us. But, I think we, this is a situation, it seems to me, that we're taking this on faith.
Well, some of it too is, you know, part of the question is, what is the vehicle for enforcement? Let's say it wasn't, let's say it wasn't done. And, and this is no disrespect to Ms. Insana, but let's just play what-if here for a moment. If it wasn't done, then the question becomes, you know, is there some sort of injunctive relief, that we have to go to court and force it? Is there a fine? Is there, are there provisions in the ordinance to fine somebody for not following through with a conservation? You know, there, there's just some questions there that probably need to be answered.
Lynn?
I, I would speak against the motion, I think it's too far-reaching.
The only way that it could be insured is if it was zoned differently. It would be a zoning issue, to, that establishes a conservation district, and that we do have zoning that's appropriate for that, in recreational and something else, but this land is not zoned that way, so I don't think that we have much of a land leg to, to enforce particularly.
Charlie?
Well, yeah, the problem is, is that we don't, you know, this is outside the city, right? Okay, so we can't zone a piece of it, as we would. If we did, if we're doing this as a planned unit development, there would be agreements about how things were done, and, you know, a certain amount of green space is required, and, and so on. What I'm trying to do is get to language similar to that PUD-type approach, a PUD that we just sent to council. We, we are agreeing to certain waivers here on the understanding that we're, we're creating this conservation area anyway, okay? I mean, there's certain waivers that we're doing, and that's why I think that, you know, we should be able to tie in, into effect, at least, you know, the seven-acre pond area, or whatever, as part of the requirement for having given a waiver to 25 feet of, of-
Libby, do you wanna respond? I'll also hear from the petitioner. Go ahead.
Yeah, so, so, yeah, so I, I think there, there, you know, we're trying to, we're trying to create a conservation, a rural conservation district here without having anything in agreement with the county, and, and so on. And I think that's what I'm trying to get to, is there's some way we can sort of get there, at least until we get a, a rural conservation district set up with, with the county.
Ms. Tyler, Dr. Tyler?
And, what we're doing is really the purview of our subdivision and land development ordinance, so to the extent that there's any provisions to ensure conservation, it really, in my view, without the research that we'd like to do, needs to be tied to those technical waivers or deferrals. So, requiring, you know, the pond to be, have certain species, or, you know, look a certain way, there isn't really a nexus between that and a narrower street. So we're, we're looking at a very narrow ordinance, which is our subdivision and land development. We don't have zoning authority, this isn't a PUD, it's not an annexation agreement, we're not reviewing the development, we're reviewing whether this development meets the subdivision and development ordinance of the city, which, this is our jurisdiction. And if there are waivers and deferrals, do those waivers and deferrals need those very explicit criteria for waivers? So if you are to condition these waivers and deferrals, I believe it should be a very logical connection. So, for example, say you want to have a waiver for a 25-foot street width, a condition of that might be that the covenants include no parking, that there be a, a mechanism that if somebody has a party, that they have off-site parking, and this is related to that waiver, and it's to protect the safety, so it's related to the criteria and the waiver. So to kind of blanket, say, we wanna ensure a conservation subdivision, we're gonna bargain with you on these waivers, you've stepped outside the criteria by which those waivers should be granted. There may be some, so we want to seek some nexus between the waivers and the conditions, and there may be some, but I'm, I'm not thinking of them right now.
Yeah, so, but, so, the, the, but the motion is simply to research, this is a possibility. So, and I think that's, that's, I think that's a reasonable request of staff.
Ms. Insana, you had your hand up for a while, I wanted to, do you get a chance to respond?
Well-
You might be able to clarify.
Yeah, I think that you don't probably need to bother doing that, because if you've already all decided that I don't get the sewer waiver, then there is no project. It goes away. You all decided that $5,000 a lot was something that this could handle, but that's not true. This subdivision is costing me money, and I will not spend another $5,000 a lot to put in pipes that are doubtfully useful.
Lynn?
I kindly call the question.
Okay. Okay. All right, let's, let's take a vote on this last piece, which is to ask staff to research incorporating the conservation aspects to this. All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
All those opposed?
No.
Can I just show hands, so I can see? All those in favor, please raise your hand? Okay, all those opposed? Okay, so it's four to three that carries, and so staff can look into that and bring us some information next week. I believe at this point, if there are no other motions on this particular issue, are there? I'm doing it. Do we have to have a motion for the whole thing, then? Okay, so let's do a motion to send it with all the provisions that we have said to council. Do you make that motion? Okay, second, is there a second?
Second.
All right, a motion from Charlie, a second from Lynn, any discussion? Heather?
I'll be voting no, because we just heard Ms. Insana say that if the sewers are required, that this is dead in the water, so I, I, I'm sorry to see that happen. I was looking forward to development that could some, someday be part of the city.
Charlie?
I think an important point in, in this was, was Mr. Gray's point, that what happens between the property line and the, and the house is up to the developers, that we're simply requiring the line down the, down the right-of-way with a connection to the property. So, I mean, I think that's a reasonable middle ground on this. I hope the, the developer can work with that.
Yeah, and, excuse me, and also, the, the issue, an issue here is that it's unclear to me, yet, that why 12 lots cannot support such a minor infrastructure? That has, that argument has not been made to me yet, yet, so that's why I'll be supporting this, this motion. Is there any discussion from committee members? Okay, if not, all those in favor of sending this to council signify by saying aye?
Aye.
All those opposed?
No.
Okay, and if we, let's see, I believe there was an announcement that Charlie wanted to make about computer recycling?
Yeah, I just, this is something we probably wanna announce at every council and committee meeting at the beginning, is that there's a Champagne County Computer and Electronics Recycling Event scheduled for Saturday, April 21st, rain or shine, from 8:00 AM to 3:30 PM, at the Solocop North Parking Lot at 1500 East Main Street in Urbana. The items accepted are gonna be computers and PCs, copiers, which will have a $10 fee, stereo equipment, TVs at a $5 to $10 fee, computer monitors at a $5 fee for monochrome, printers, scanners, PC peripherals, loose hardware, video conferencing equipment, networking equipment, and servers, phones and cellphones will be taken at this. For more information, for more information, you can go to the county, the City of Champagne's website, no, the county website at www.co.champagne-il.us/news.html, or call the county at 217-819-4105. And I assume there'll be a link to this prominently on the cities, on both cities' webpages. I would expect to see one on our city webpage within the next couple of days. Thank you.
Okay, with that, we stand adjourned.